Okay, we are going to start the meeting up. So we have a really long agenda, so we're going to get going. Good evening and welcome. This is the May 12th, 2022 Town Official Planning Board Meeting. I'm Jonathan Kanter, Chair, and I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. And would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. Couple of real quick announcements and reminders. One is to please silence your cell phones. You certainly are welcome to have them and even use them to record if you wanted to, but to silence them just out of courtesy to those of us at the meeting. Also, we're trying to make sure we all speak into the microphone very loudly and clearly so that everybody here and at home can hear us. I'd like to introduce and welcome two newly appointed full Planning Board members. Jody Lynn Burka over on that end.
Hi.
And Fred Kanter right next to Jody. Fred was an alternate member for a short time and just at the last Town Board meeting, both were appointed as full members, so welcome both of you. Also, BJ, and I'm not sure how he pronounces his name, but BJ Gopal Kalambe was reappointed by the Town Board to a one-year term as an alternate member.
He's not here yet.
And he's not here. Yeah, I think he was planning on attending, but I haven't seen him yet.
He was, yes.
Yes, he did. Yep.
Also, I wanted to thank Bridget Anderson for her years of service on the Planning Board. Bridget was on the Board for a little over three years, and I thought Bridget was a really good Planning Board member. She participated a lot in Board discussions. She had really good attendance and took the educational aspects of the job very seriously. So I wanted to thank Bridget for her time on the Board. Also, I wanted to thank Anthony Brozier for filling in at the April meeting. I was out for health reasons. I'm feeling much better and hope that I will still be feeling better at the end of the meeting at what ends, looks like a very long meeting. So let's get started. So the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Board to approve and adopt the March 10th, 2022 meeting minutes. I had provided some corrections on the draft minutes to Debbie in the Planning Department Office. Do members have any additional comments or suggestions for the minutes?
No.
All right, good. So would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the March 10th, 2022 meeting?
Some move.
Anthony moves. Is there a second? Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have, I believe we have seven full voting members here, so that's seven to nothing. Okay, thank you. All right. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on the LMD Homes subdivision freshwater wetlands, water course, and water body permit. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible, applicant seeks to obtain a freshwater wetlands, water course, and water body permit to conduct regulated activities with the town regulated wetland buffer area. The activities involve disturbance of the 100-foot wetland buffer for the proposed driveway entrances, the water service and main connections, and detention pond grading. A public hearing for the preliminary subdivision plat was held and closed by the Planning Board on November 18th, 2021, so this public hearing is now specifically on the freshwater wetlands buffer permit. I'm not going to read all the information about the tax parcel number or the other aspects of the location, but this is basically in conjunction with a six-lot residential subdivision. The proposed lots range in size from 0.9 acres to 1.27 acres. And I think that's enough for now. So first, would someone please make a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Anthony moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is open. Welcome, Mr. Day, and if you could just give a very brief explanation of why we are here tonight for a public hearing on the wetland buffer.
Good evening. As you mentioned, this is a six-lot subdivision. The subdivision's on Baxter Town Road. It's actually between Baxter Town Road and Orchard Place. As you mentioned, there is an existing New York State DEC wetland, which is on the south side of Baxter Town Road. But in order to provide the driveways and some utility improvements on Baxter Town Road, we would be in the buffer of that DEC wetland. And it's also, we're here tonight to obtain a town wetland permit, and obviously the public hearing is a part of that.
Okay, thank you very much. First, I'd like to see a show of hands from people in the audience as to whether anyone wishes to speak to this particular public hearing tonight. If I don't see any hands, I will not read the public hearing rules. Is there somebody back there? Okay, sorry, I didn't see you. So I will read the rules for conducting public hearings, and then this can serve for the second public hearing we have as well. So you won't have to do that, Anthony.
I had it here. You're doing it for me, so thank you.
Or do you like to read it now?
If you want, I can.
So first, speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone and are limited to no more than four minutes. We will keep track of the time, and you'll be getting a one-minute warning. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made either at previous meetings or hearings or earlier in this hearing are not allowed. Speakers are encouraged to submit comments in writing, so you can simply summarize your comments here at the hearing, and then we can have a full statement from you. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board. That is the particular application under review at this hearing. Verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts are not allowed, and interruptions are also not allowed, and if they are made and continue, the Chair may ask people to leave the room if they are so doing. So it looks like we have at least one person who would like to speak. Would you come up to the podium, please, and state your name and home address?
This is my first time at a meeting. My name is Diane Boujikian. I live at 257 Baxter Town Road directly across, oh, actually kitty corner from the property. So I didn't come prepared with notes or knowledge of previous meetings, so I'm not sure that my comment will be accepted.
Well, you're welcome to comment. Again, this hearing is specifically for the wetland buffer permit. We had a previous public hearing on the subdivision itself, so we'd like to limit comments to the freshwater wetland aspect of this.
I was just concerned, we have a well at our house, and I was concerned if this was at all going to compromise homes in that area that have wells.
So this is also not a Q&amp;A session, so we're not going to be answering your questions here. We're just taking your comments.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight who would like to make comments on the LMD Homes freshwater wetlands buffer permit? I do not see anyone. If anyone sees any hands in the back that I can't see, please let me know.
No.
All right. Okay, well, if there are no additional people wishing to speak, I'd like to turn to our engineer and our attorney for your suggestion on whether we should close the public hearing tonight.
I don't see any reason why the public hearing shouldn't be closed tonight unless counsel objects.
No, I concur. Thank you.
Okay. All right, then, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Bob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the public hearing is closed by a vote of 7-0. And I would like to indicate that discussion of the LMD Homes application, including the wetland permit, will be a little bit later in the meeting, so.
Is that something we can ask for approval for the wetland permit this evening?
No, we would need that to be embedded in a resolution that would be drafted by our consultants.
As part of the preliminary and final sub resolution?
Well, yeah, as you know, Mark, we don't issue approvals without seeing a written draft resolution in front of us.
Yeah, we were thinking this was a separate.
Well, it's the same for permits or approvals.
Okay.
So we can talk later during the discussion. Okay, and so the next public hearing will be the Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses. I am recusing myself from any discussion or participation in reviewing or acting on this application as I have done at past meetings, and I'll do so at this public hearing. I'll ask Vice Chair Anthony Brozier to fill in as Chair for this application, and I will leave the room.
I'll read the, I'll read the item that's on the agenda. Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan Approval for the Construction of a 47,073-square-foot two-story office building, a 15,187-square-foot one-story accessory maintenance building, the reconstruction of an existing 14,527-square-foot warehouse for accessory storage and exercise use, and the addition of an accessory park and meditation areas, along with all associated improvements, including 247 parking spaces and four loading spaces. The proposed project is for use by members of the religious order and religious volunteers. The parcels for this proposal are located in the PI Planned Industry Zoning District with one lot consisting of 52.2 acres at 5 Chelsea Industrial Park and the other consisting of 5.14 acres at 26 Chelsea Industrial Park. This will be a continuation of the public hearing that was opened by the Planning Board at the April 14th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Brozier, members of the Board. My name is Michael DeMeo. I'm the Director of Design for Jehovah's Witnesses here in the Hudson Valley, and Mr. Hyer could not be here, had a COVID event he had to deal with, so he wanted to apologize to make sure that you all understood he'd be here if he could. We're here for the continuation of your public hearing. We appreciate the comments that we've received so far. We've done our best to address those back to the Board, and we're here for some additional comments from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open to public comment for the evening, I do want to make note of a few items. First, this application is on the agenda later tonight for a project review where we will discuss this project in greater detail, including some of the topics brought up during the public hearing that are part of the purview of this Board. The public comments that were received at the April 14th Planning Board meeting, as well as those public comments that have been received by email since the past meeting, are part of the project record. I would kindly ask the public provide only new or different information and commentary. One of our rules of conduct states that repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are prohibited. I will note that we received several comments via email since the last meeting. I will not read each of the emails verbatim, but I can assure the public that the emails provided are part of the project record and are part of the review that our Board, our consultants, and the applicant will all be doing. The key items pertaining to the purview of this Planning Board will be discussed with the applicant in detail. And so the first email is from Donald Strifler dated April 14th. I believe this was the same message that was passed out to the Board at the April meeting. It's a three-page letter with 14 comments. The comments address some of the following topics: landscaping, lighting, future lighting, amplified sound systems, hours of operations, questions about town special permits, easements, meets and bounds, soil relocation, suggestions for tinted glass on windows, and emergency roads and access. We received an email from Ed Gachiis from Two Overlook Court, received on April 14th. He provided a one-page handwritten letter. The issues mentioned in his letter included buffering, lighting, and locations of proposed activities on-site. We received an email from Megan Migliore at 5793 Boulder Way dated April 14th. The issues mentioned in the email included impacts to adjacent Holly Ridge and Briarwood neighborhoods, visual impacts, noise impacts, property values, traffic on Brockway Road, and tax burdens on town infrastructure. We received an email from Ann Kanter at 4907 Ridgecrest Drive dated April 28th. The email agreed with the comments provided previously regarding traffic, noise, and lighting. We received an email from Daniel S. Wilson dated earlier today, May 12th. Email mentioned tax burdens, usage of town amenities, parking lot size, and traffic. We received an email from Pam Jones earlier today, May 12th. The email mentioned traffic and concerns about the recreational area. We received an email from Richard Godden earlier today. The email expressed opposition to the project but did not make any references to specific topics that would be part of the purview of this Planning Board. And we also received an email from an unnamed party this afternoon who did not make any references to specific topics that would be part of the purview of this Planning Board. At this time, I will recognize those of the public who wish to speak. When you come up, I will kindly ask you to provide your name and address for the record. I have to make another motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is conversation, my fault. My bad, my bad, sorry.
So by a show of hands, and I'll start.
Sorry.
A show of hands of those who would wish to speak tonight? Hop, all the way in the back. Yes. Yes, ma'am, you in the back.
So I just want to commend all of my neighbors that are present here today to speak out and stand up against a project that will cause some strain to our lives. I would like to ask the Board, or just suggest to the Board, the things that you're asking us not to repeat if we're not present here, and those letters and emails that you have received from other residents, if we're not privy to that information, we may just repeat it. So it's probably best to read those emails in its totality to assist us in the, in the audience to prevent repeating some of the information. Just a suggestion from myself, that this project with over 250 parking spaces is excessive to a Brockway and Holly Ridge road that only has one way in and one way out. In addition to that, since 2003, there's been a numerous amount of accidents that have occurred there. Unfortunately, I have foiled the Fishkill, I've foiled the state police, and I've also foiled the, I think it's the state and the county. I am awaiting all of the police reports that coincide with the accidents that have occurred there. My sister is one of those individuals who was going up the hill, and another vehicle struck her, and she kind of rolled down into the mountain. This is without excessive amount of 250 additional cars coming into our community on a weekly basis or whatever they see fit. So we are not opposed to good neighbors, but we are telling you now with our presence that this is not a project that we are welcoming. We understand that they have as-of-right building, but they do not have to build 250 parking spaces. They call the Recreation Center an access place. However, if they're going to build something like that, maybe they should build a dome, something that can confine the noise that we continuously hear where I live at because they're cheering each other on. Again, we are not against people doing what they want to do on the property that they have, however, noise travels and we are affected by this. So it is my hope that this public hearing will remain open because I was unable to download the 1,805 pages that consisted with this agenda packet so that myself and other neighbors can comb through it and ensure that all the things that we are requesting be done, be done. The other thing is, is that at the last meeting, some of the residents where I live attempted to speak. If you are going to close a public hearing, you can close it, but you cannot then allow the attorney to speak to the same issues. And so therefore, we found that to be unfair and unjust. And again, we live here, we pay taxes here, you guys sit here to assist and help us. And so this presence today is telling you that this project is going to cause our lives a lot of inconvenience if it is not scaled down or changed, and we're not given the opportunity to review the 1,805 pages that consisted with this agenda. Your actions to move this forward would be unjust. Thank you.
By a show of hands, anybody else from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Hahn, may I? Hello, Jason Frankel from 6107 High Ridge Court. One thing I thought was worth mentioning is years ago when AVR Realty was granted the permit for the place, and they were trying to develop near the water, there were terms there to try to give the residents of Fishkill better waterfront access because we have very poor waterfront access. And unfortunately, the trend has been going in the opposite direction so that places we used to be allowed to walk, we're not allowed to walk anymore because of no trespassing signs. Even a couple spots where you could drive and look at the sunset over the river, they put no parking signs there. So the point is they're totally cutting off the town of Fishkill from the beautiful Hudson River, and it would be good for any development that happens there to purposely enhance Fishkill Town residents' access to the river and the riverside. Thank you.
By a show of hands, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
My name is Louise Danielli. I'm a taxpaying resident of Fishkill. I'm also a member of the Town Board, but I am speaking tonight as a concerned resident. It is in my opinion that this project concerns me on many levels. Town comprehensive planning is used to regulate public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens. This project, this proposed project does none of this. Allowing 246 parking spaces for those who live in a complex to park and work or use the building or grounds will affect those in nearby areas by polluting the air with unnecessary vehicle emissions from 246 vehicles. They have already advised they will create walking paths and bicycle paths, which should be used instead. If the weather is bad, they can create a jitney van, which they have numerous vans, and they can pick up and drop off the residents, which would be eliminating the large parking area, using less asphalt, and creating less runoff and groundwater concerns. The safety of taxpaying residents is put in jeopardy with the increased amount of traffic that will travel on one road that leads in and out, Brockway Road. Although they state the primary users of the proposed project will be residents of Rivercrest, who are the secondary users? Will this be weekend, a weekend retreat location? Will it be a functioning business with employees other than those residing in Rivercrest? The traffic study was only done based on the premise that the primary users are Rivercrest residents. The unknown secondary traffic of buses, vans, and trucks creates potential for more accidents and poor quality of road maintenance, which could lead to undue citizen vehicle maintenance, as well as more frequent road maintenance. A road district should be created and maintained by the Jehovah's. The general welfare of the surrounding taxpaying residents is greatly affected by noise and light pollution already from the current residents. Inviting more people to use new recreational fields will have a negative effect on the welfare of the citizens living in the surrounding area. In August of 2015, the Jehovah Witness Organization bought the third property in the Brockway area, the Chelsea Ridge, or the Chelsea Senior Living Facility that was built by AVR. They already owned the Rivercrest Luxury Apartments and the former industrial way land and buildings. At that time, they advised they were planning on developing, quote, "office space," and the previous plans for a video studio were taken off the books. I'd like to know if a video studio is potentially back on the books? Or will it be a business for printing Bibles or other printed literature, as they do at other watchtower developments? What will be going on in the two-story office building? What will be stored in the one-story storage building? What type of accessories will be maintained in the one-story building? The warehouse will be reconstructed. What will be stored there? I think it is, being a good neighbor, I think that if you're going to be a good neighbor, you should include being honest and transparent and letting residents know what will be coming. Although the Jehovah's may have an as-of-right to build on their property, there are things they can do that might mitigate potential issues. So to recap, in my opinion, the following modifications would make this project more agreeable to neighboring residents. Eliminate the 246 parking lot. It is just, it is not justified and environmentally bad. Create a road district to document that they will maintain the road due to the excessive traffic that will be going back and forth with this new rec area, office work area, warehouse, and loading docks. Three, create an agreement to give local residents in the nearby HOA communities permission to use the walking trails as they have used in the past. Create a document with written consequences if they fail to comply with the established rules regarding lighting and noise, specifically certain times of days and nights, and what would, what they would be held to if they violated them. That's it. Thank you for your time and your service on the Planning Board. I appreciate it.
By a show of hands, is there anybody else? Yes. You, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Straber, 4703 Ridgecrest Drive. At the last meeting, the attorney for the Jehovah's stated that the 250 parking spaces was going to be for the people that lived in the apartment complex there. My question is, if you're coming to play ball and soccer, and you're young, as most of the people that live there, why do you need 250 parking spaces? Why can you just not walk across the street, particularly since you're going to play sports? Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Yes. I'll get to you next. I saw your hand there.
Hi, my name is Heather Spatafino, and I'm actually blocking out people. Come on, you got to say something because this is really disturbing. So basically, so many levels. I know that I went to the last meeting and things were discussed, but the people that are here now are not privy to that information. Where I live, I can close my windows and possibly not hear what's going on outside. I go step outside, and I hear cheering from 10 players playing baseball. I hear the clink of the bat, and I hear the screaming. And this is starting at 8 o'clock in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays when we're trying to have a peaceful day. If you come to our neighborhood, you can breathe and you can feel the beauty of Duchess County, and this is why we moved up here. And when I tell you how outrageous this is going to be, having a soccer field beyond our trees to having a baseball field behind our trees, this is where we live and our homes, I'll maintain myself, our homes are right here, and what they're proposing is right of reach, you can see them. And if they're going to be bussing in people, teams from others, from other states, from other places, there are going to be teams, buses, there's going to be carloads of people. What if 200, you know, what if these people decide to all come at once? How are we going to get out of our complex, our road? Brockway is a small road. You go onto 9D, you can't get out. This today, coming home from work, it was already a travesty. And that's not with Dutch, with Duchess Stadium having a game tonight. This is not with Duchess Stadium having a graduation. We already have two months. We already have too much traffic and it's already devastating. What I'm concerned about is the warehouse. Are there going to be massive trucks going down Brockway? They're going to, are, we're going to have pitted roads. It's going to be a disgrace. And what's happening with strangers, like, I mean, I get it. Hey, listen, I have nothing against our neighbors that live at Rivercrest, at the Jehovah Witness compound, but they're now going to be having strangers come that don't live here, that are not Fish Gill residents, come and use this screaming. They're going to be screaming and chanting and woo, you know, but loud. So I'm surprised that more people from Streamside, from the, you know, more people from the other communities, they don't know. When I tell you that I mentioned something to the townhouse complex that was next door to the, to Rivercrest, I'll call it Rivercrest, they have no clue what's going on. They don't know. And so you have people that spent $450,000 on their townhouse. You have new people, there's new buyers that are coming in that have not a clue at what's going on. How am I going to sell my house? We just got assessed for $40,000 more for our taxes. I'm going to pay more when I'm not going to be able to sell my house? How am I going to sell my house when there's going to be noise? Spring, summer, and fall. Spring with soccer and baseball, baseball and soccer all, all summer and all fall? You could have noise pollution all the time because they, as much as they're good neighbors, they don't respect our peace at all because they, there's just 10 of them playing and they're screaming. And you can hear it as far as Duchess Stadium, that noise. And you're, please don't allow this to happen. That's all I have to say. And I'm angry. I'm so angry that I walked my 180 units in my complex with my neighbor Hannah over there. We walked and we knocked on every door and said, "Please come." And because of other obligations, people are not able to be here. And I, I mean, I appreciate your time, I really, really do, but please understand that the amount of outrage that I encountered last night in like, "Are you kidding me? I had no idea." It's bad and it's sad. It's sad. I'm going to, it's just very sad. But anyway, thank you so much. And this is not my, my cup of tea, people. It's not my cup of tea, but please, say something. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wishes? Yes, sir. I see you right there.
My name is Adela Sal. I've lived at 5202 Borderway, Holly Ridge. I used to live in the Bronx, near Van Queter Park. And four years ago, when I decided to move out, I used to be a teacher, public school teacher in New York City. At the same time, I joined counterterrorism language services for the Department of Justice. Four years ago, I decided to have a peace of mind and then I moved up to this area. And then, for me, this is heaven. I believe with rights. You have, I have my rights, you have your rights. But I believe that my rights end where your rights start, where your rights begin. So with this project, I'm not going to add too much because I make it brief. I heard everybody who spoke before me about all the concerns, and these concerns are real. Property value, this is one of them as well. Besides the noise, the livelihood, I mean, I invested my life, let alone the money. I wish I can be rich enough to live somewhere else. But at this point, all I see, it's, it's more valuable, for me, more valuable than everything else, than the money, the houses, the property, everything, is the people I live with. Those are the people that I really enjoy now. It's, it's really devastating to hear what's going on. I know all the details and have all the details about this project, but this project is not going to be good. Not good. All I can ask you all, with our respect, is put yourselves in our shoes. Stand in our shoes and decide. That's all I had to ask for. Thank you. God bless.
Anybody else who wishes to speak tonight? Uh, yes, and...
Good evening. My name is Bernard, Bernard Gaston. I live in High Ridge. I've been living here for 15 years. I moved up from the Bronx as well, raised my children, and I thought this place is like the best, the peace. Coming from New York City, raising kids, and raised them here, we want that peace. That's what we found where we live in our community. And right now, I walk my dog at six o'clock in the morning. At any given weekend, I hear that coming through the trees. Yeah! The loud bullhorns and everything they want, they don't care. Six o'clock in the morning, we all work. Some days you want to sleep in on that Saturday or that Sunday. It's hard. They taking that from us. We just asking that you keep this open, this forum open, because there's a lot of loose ends right now. And a lot of people have things to say to get off their chest. Thank you.
I live in Streamside Knolls and Mulberry Loop. My property abuts Brockway. I have a deck that overlooks Brockway. I see the traffic that goes down that road. I see the construction trucks that come up and down that road. We moved up here for the reason this other gentleman did, for the quietness, for the peace. And to sit out there and watch more traffic come up and down that road, for what? For, who knows? Who knows what it's for? I've seen the accidents. It's just, it, I don't think this is going to benefit anybody within our community, except the people living back there. I walk my dog back there. I've had people stop me, security back there stopped me because I'm walking my dog on the public road down there. It's, it's not going to be a good situation. So please take that in consideration and, you know, do what you have to do. Thank you.
My name is Mel Smith. I'm at 4507 for going on 11 years. Jehovah's Witnesses have a big problem with child abuse, and I know personally with the headquarters. And there was a guy named Jesus Cano that was in Walk Hill, and he went into Milltown. He tried to molest a little 12-year-old kid. So he was arrested and they, you know, they sent him out of the country or whatever, whatever. But I think we, we have a lot of kids floating around, and I haven't heard of any incidents since I've been there. But I'd like to ask that, you know, all this be considered into the factor because they have a two-witness rule. So if the second person didn't see it, then the sin didn't happen. And so if something happens to a kid, we need protection. Just last month, two elders in Illinois, they were fined 10 months because they covered up child abuse by a judge. You can look up the cases, Michael Pincava and Colin Scott. So I'm just saying, as you make these decisions, factor in that it's, you know, our kids in the neighborhood. It's, so it's very important that you, you think about us, too. All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Maxine Brown. I live at 1604 Pondview Loop, and I purchased when this was a concept in 2003. There was not a single house back there yet. I was sold on the concept of AVR, what that development was supposed to be. Moving from the Bronx, that was a big leap for a 31-year-old woman, single woman at that time, to make that leap of faith because I wanted peace and quiet moving from the Bronx, from the grand concourse. I'd saved all my money, $60,000, all by myself, no loans, nothing, and that is what I gave AVR on the concept of this is what you're going to sell me. All this has changed over the periods since I've been here. I remember they told me it was going to take two years to build Holly Ridge and Stream, Stream Knoll. I waited patiently for two years. Now that I've been here, I've seen that the concept, the original concept of AVR is changing rapidly and not for the, for the best. It's actually looking more like the Bronx, which I wanted to get away from. I'm a taxpayer. I've never been defaulted on my mortgage. I'm a very good, I would say a great citizen. Please do not let me leave this state because that's what's going to happen if this, if you approve this. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Got you next.
Hi, I'm Roberta West. I live also in Holly Loop, Pondview, I'm sorry, Pondview Loop. And just want to say that a lot of the people in my community are retired or current public servants. I think you heard a theme, a lot of us came from the Bronx, Southern Westchester. I was a cop for 28 years in Yonkers. We came for the peace and quiet. I lived for about 20 years on a busy corner in White Plains. Told my husband, "When we retire, we got to leave, we got to go to a place that's quiet." You know, we are close to Duchess Stadium, hear the fireworks every Friday and Saturday night. That's enough noise from the outside world for me. Okay? We occasionally hear a train whistle. That's enough. We do want quiet. We want peace. We've earned it. We have earned it. We're all working people, all taxpayers. I also want to point out the road conditions. It's the worst, Brockway is the worst road for a lot of traffic. It is narrow, it is steep, it is winding. You can do the math. The end of Industrial Way, where the gate is for the access to the railroad, is frequently very muddy and mucky. That's, that is watchtower property. They are supposed to be maintaining that and they are not. I don't know what they're going to do when they start digging up other land to build things. Where's that runoff going to go? One more thing. Old Toll Brothers is building what seems to be about a 90 complex, 90 residence complex right now there. I don't think there's anything you can do about that. It's kind of done, or, you know, it's there, it's in the process of going on. That's 90 additional residences using Brockway. So please, this is, this is a lot. And to say that, you know, you have to be able to control what's going to go on with this watchtower property. They are not taxpayers. You should not be going out of your way to accommodate them. You should be hard on them with every decision that you make, and I really hope you are. Where every light bulb goes, if there's any going to be any noise barrier, if there's going to be regulation about how often they can have games, when these games can start, when they can end, please, please be tough on them. Thank you.
My name is Dave Maddox. I live at 6101 High Ridge Court in, in the development. I'm hearing everything that these folks have said. I've heard this all before from where I used to live. I used to live over in La Grange, and they built soccer fields over there, right behind our community. And what started out as, we'll just do it in the morning, became all weekend. We had company, we had clubs come up from Westchester. We had clubs come over across the river, and it just became more of a nuisance than anybody ever thought it would be. And what everybody is saying and considerations, we're sort of, we're not even beyond five years down the road yet. We're looking at the issues we're seeing now, and they're going to be, they're going to grow. I mean, it's just the nature of things. Whatever is approved, people always like to say, "Okay, let's see if we can expand a little bit more on this." And I think that's what we're all asking for, is just proper consideration for us. We all came here for the same reason, for the, to enjoy the quietness of the community. And the traffic will be bad. Then there are going to be concerns. I mean, I'm a civil engineer. I've seen the reports. I know what goes on with these things as well. And it's, it's not going to be, the current road system can't do it, the queuing's not correct for, for leaving and coming into the community. So I hope the traffic report does reflect that as well. But just, just be honest and true about what you think and what you approve. Thank you.
Is there anybody? We have one more.
Hello, my name is Rashina Moss, 5701 Boulderway. I too moved up from the Bronx. I have twins that are six years old, so they actually learned how to ride their bike in their community. And they take their rides down by the river. We have not told them yet that we soon will not be able to ride our bikes down that way. It will be heartbreaking for them to realize that we cannot go that way. They are just learning how to read, so they'll be able to see the sign that says, "No trespassing." And that, to me, that is heartbreaking because I didn't grow up in a community like this. They get joy from riding their bikes. During COVID, once we realized that you can't catch the coronavirus from the air, we took walks to clear our minds, to enjoy our life up here, breathe the fresh air. So our children, little six-year-olds, will be heartbroken that they can't take their bikes down that way. And they usually ride up Brockway to, as a reward, to Leos because they made the bike trail. They did their truck, the exercise for the day. So it really would be heartbreaking to see the traffic increase and be able, and not be able to take them for walks and rides down to the river. So if you could be considerate and create ways that we can live together, that would be something that we would appreciate. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Antonucci. I live in Holly Ridge and have lived there for 17 years. Last month at the meeting, the watchtower rep stated that the recreational facilities would be primarily for the exclusive use of the Rivercrest property. So I am asking the town attorney to add that to the documented approval that this facility will be primarily used for the Rivercrest residents, because that's what the representative had stated last month. I'm also asking for this meeting to be held open again due to lack of proper notice. You may recall that I asked for that same thing at last month's meeting, and I provided three specific areas where signs should be placed. I would like to thank the planning board for holding the meeting open and making that vote, but I have to tell you how incredibly disappointed and really shocked I was that the board took none of the suggested notifications. I had clearly provided three specific spots. So essentially, the meeting was held open for a lack of proper notice, but then absolutely nothing was done to rectify the lack of proper notice. The board, and when you discussed it, you discussed looking at possibly placing another sign, but there was struggle with where the sign could possibly be placed. And not once, but twice, the acting chairman stated that he did not know where to put another sign, but he refused to hear from any of the people that were standing there. I had my hand raised, my neighbor had her hand raised. We weren't looking to go on and talk for another five minutes. We're looking to provide a solution to the issue because we all live here. It doesn't seem like perhaps you are that familiar with the area, but we could have helped you with that situation. However, the watchtower rep was then invited to come back up and speak, but not the town residents. So it kind of seems like people that don't live in the town and don't pay taxes take priority over the town residents who do pay taxes, and I don't really understand, you know, how that could be. It honestly got to the point where it felt so absurd, I thought maybe I was on an SNL episode. You know, we wanted to go ahead and provide a response to you as to where the, the sign could be placed. So I am the vice president of the HOA at Holly Ridge. The president was also here. We could have granted permission to place it in one of the places that I had suggested on Holly Ridge property, right? We could have reached out to Streamside to see if we could get them to agree to put a sign on their property. So, you know, I just don't understand the point of it was held open and then people were encouraged to submit their feedback to email, to come to the meeting, but the same issue applies. How would they know that there is a meeting taking place because we still did not provide proper notice? The only sign is still down on their property where no one is going to go pass by, and it's not even facing the road straight on. It's at an angle facing It's at an angle facing their property. There was a traffic study that was done. It looked like over only two days. So not a full week, not, you know, over the weekend. And, I mean, these are concerns. I don't know really what the accuracy of that traffic study is when it wasn't, you know, taken over a full week. So again, just to recap, I'm asking you to once again hold the meeting open. I'm asking to have it properly noticed, right? With the three different locations that I specified last time, at the entrance exit to Holly Ridge, the entrance exit to Streamside onto Brockway, and the entrance exit of Streamside onto 9D. And just for the heck of it, you could even throw in a sign on the entrance to Brockway. The other point is that one of those, the traffic study, there was no camera or nothing tracking vehicles coming into Brockway that go into that shopping plaza. That is where a significant amount of traffic comes from, but those cameras were not placed at the beginning of Brockway. So I think as everyone else has said, we want you to be, consider us as you would consider it if this was your home that you invested in, that you've lived in for many, many years. We are concerned with the safety of our children. This is a nice, safe residential neighborhood. They're riding bikes. And now we're going to have a massive amount of traffic coming through, you know, Brockway. And the impact that this is going to have on us. And so again, I just ask you to please consider that.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jessica Spadafino, and I am currently 19 years old. I have grown up in Holly Ridge my whole life. I've had the luxury of being able to go on bike rides and go on walks around my neighborhood and not to be concerned for my safety. And now with this, these upcoming plans, I feel like my safety is at risk. And this is scary for not only me as a young woman, but for everyone. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But there's going to be people coming in from all over. These are not neighbors. These are not people that we are, we know who they are. These are strangers. And I do not feel comfortable walking out of my house without someone else with me now because of these people that are coming here from all over. And just please keep in mind the safety of the children and the families that live in these communities. Thank you.
My name is Tisha Horton. I'm a resident of Holly Ridge on Ponvi Loop. Sorry. It's Tisha Horton, resident of Holly Ridge on Ponvi Loop. Like I heard everything everyone's saying. I just hope you're really taking it in because it really is a tight community. And I came from Harlem, and I still work in the city. And I come up here and it's just so different. It's just the area, the people, the environment, the community, you know, it's peaceful, you know, and it's quiet for the most part from where I am. My biggest concern is with the children. You know, we all have young children and they're, you know, of age where they can ride their bikes and, you know, go along the community together. And I'm not, and I'm usually not concerned. You know, I know my son is safe and he's riding his bike with his friends. But at this point now, it's just, seems like it's going to be a little terrifying to know that they are going to go out there or have to deal with all the traffic coming in and out. And all of this different people we're not, you know, we're not familiar with. So please take that into consideration that the children would, you know, lose out on having that access. And all the traffic that's already going in and out, just going in and out this one way. There's too much traffic. It's going to be, it's going to be dangerous for all of us, the children and for us driving our cars. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll try to stick to the recommendations for not trying to repeat things others have said. My name is Hugh Sauer, 806 Ponvi Loop. I've been a resident of Fishkill for 20 years. I'm going to just make one comment, not necessarily for our development and those living immediately there. But I think we all know already the mess of the corridor that 9D is in that area. And this is going to far impact even us living in the immediate area. And I echo all the sentiments that have already been raised. And that's the first comment. This is going to be globally impacting the town. My second comment is that, you know, people have a right to do, you know, whatever they please to some extent on a property they own. My concern is, who can and how can that be monitored and enforced? Who's going to, if we, if we agree, or say if we come to an agreement that from eight to five, that they're allowed to do whatever they're allowed to do on their fields and make whatever noise they want to make. But after a certain time on the weekends and the weekdays that they can't. Okay. But who's, who can enforce such a thing once, once that's in effect? You know, who can tell them what to do and who can enforce that? So those are just, I think, a couple of extra comments. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Anafi, and I'm a resident of Holly Ridge. We bought this property like when it was just planned as the ladies had won up my neighbors. So this was like 2003. I've been living here in Duchess County for like 24 years or so. So I would like, I have the very same concerns as everybody in my neighborhood said. But I have one more concern which I faced like maybe 15 years back. I was driving on Brockway. There was a truck driver right in front of me. And as, as you know, I'm a little different than everybody else. I do cover my hair. So he saw me in his back mirror. He stopped his truck. I get a little emotional when I talk about it. Sorry for that. So he came to me and said, go back to the place from where you came. I was shivering. I couldn't do anything. The road is so narrow. I couldn't drive on the side of the truck, not, I couldn't revert back. I did report this incident to the Fishkill Police, so it can be validated. So now my concern is, besides all of those which are shared, is will I be facing more of this? So please consider issues of someone like me when you give access to more of trucks on Brockway. And it's still, I still get emotional about it. I have fear for truck drivers now on Brockway. I never, I avoid to walk on Brockway in nights and evenings and all. So please, I have, it's just a request, please, before you make any decision, do consider for people who are walking alone, who are different than others, and so on and so forth. Thank you so much.
What I'm thinking of now, to be honest with you, with the volume of people, the number of people, strangers coming from somewhere else, we don't know. We have no idea who they are. Possibility of violence is going to be there, one way or another. Now what are we going to do when there is a violence? I mean, this is what I'm concerned. I'm looking at 250 parking spaces, two or three in a car. Then do the math, but that five, six, 700 people at the same time. Is there any control over any drugs? Any control over drinking? This is an open invitation for people to come from all over the place, to do whatever they want. And who can control them? You know what? If violence happens, then I think it's too late, too late to reverse what we decide to do here. Thank you. I'm, sorry.
Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
My name is Kevin Mulligan. I live at 4206 Ridge Crest Drive. You know, I'm new to this. I didn't realize the scale of what we're talking about here. But it seems to me that, number one, the parking situation is out of hand, okay? Based upon the current configuration of how these cars are getting in and out, it's not going to fly. If you saw what 9D was like tonight to get on the Newburgh Beacon Bridge, okay? The 250 cars that wanted to get into Brockway wouldn't have got in. And if they would have got in, they wouldn't have gotten out. Okay? That's how bad it was. And this was into the evening, which doesn't really go that far, but it did. They need to build their own road to their city. They're building a city, okay, on, on, on the land that they own. They want to be, they want their office space. They want this. They want their entertainment, okay? It's all theirs. So let them be responsible for themselves getting them in and out of there. Instead of using a road that we all depend on, that's going to go way away, okay? And I have no children. I see the kids around, okay? We need to be treated, in this case, like we matter. And apparently, from what I hear, that's not the treatment that's being given to us. So I really think you need to consider that if they want to, they got plenty of money, I'm sure, let them build their own road. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie LaCicero, 5408 Boulder Way. I just feel like if we allow this to happen, we're not going to have any control over anything. I mean, there, I concur with what everyone was saying. I'm afraid for the kids too. I mean, the amount of traffic that's going to be up and down. It's, we're waiting for something to happen. And then it's going to be too late. I mean, we're taxpaying citizens here. And we're allowing people who don't pay taxes to have their way with whatever they want. Well, that's all I have to say. I hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Ma'am, you already spoke. I know I let the other man speak twice, but...
She spoke on another man.
Oh, I'm...
That's okay.
No, sorry. Go ahead.
Right. I obviously don't live where these other families do. I live on Baxter Town. But I can tell you that I'm hearing a lot of concern about noise. And having lived for 40 years on Baxter Town Road and lived in Fishkill my entire life, I can tell you that the amount of times that we've had to call with noise disturbances to the town of Fishkill Police has met with no support. The town is allowed to, the noise can be till 10 o'clock at night. And after that, good luck.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I see no show of hands, but at this point, I'm going to put Dominic on the spot. And I'm going to ask you if you could briefly speak to how our public hearings are conducted and how we differentiate our public hearing from our project review portion of the evening?
Yeah, no, thank you. As you mentioned, you know, the agenda itself is broken up into two portions. The initial portion is the public hearing, when a public hearing is being held on a project. And it's held at the beginning of the meeting so that it doesn't inconvenience the public where they would have to wait, you know, necessarily for this project to come up on the agenda. And so that they can get their public comment in early without having to wait. You know, meetings of the Fishkill Planning Board can and do sometimes go till 11 o'clock at night. And so having the public hearing portion at the front gets everyone the opportunity to address the board early. And if they can, they want to stick around, they're welcome to stick around and then hear the project discussion later on. But it is split. It's bifurcated that way. And, you know, the obligation and the process to have a public hearing is governed both by state law. And it's also governed by the town's code itself. And so the, and of course, there's also rules that, as you mentioned earlier on, regarding the conduct of public hearings as well, as far as what the board's procedure is. There was a number of comments, including a commenter early on who suggested to the effect that, you know, the purpose of a public hearing and the public's input on the project is meant to keep the public hearing open. And the public hearing should be kept open, according to the commenter. Actually, there was more than one, so that the public could continue to, you know, review and comment on the application as the application moves forward through the process. But despite that request and suggestion to the board, the purpose of the public hearing is to get the public's concerns so that the board has the input of the public while it's processing the application. And when there's been a full and fair opportunity for the public to comment on an application, then it will be appropriate for the board to consider closing public hearing at that time. I'm not suggesting that this particular moment is the time to close the public hearing. It's just that there comes a time when public hearing can and should be closed. And that is because the public at that point has been given the opportunity to review the proposal. And then it becomes within the purview of the board to review the proposal, to review the comments that were raised by the public, to also go through the comments that the board's consultants might have. But ultimately, it's the board's decision-making process that is what governs this whole process. So there was a number of comments tonight about leaving the public hearing open. I think the real question is whether or not there's going to be any additional information that's forthcoming, either from the applicant or review of any technical aspects of this that would warrant additional public comment on those items.
Yes, and I'd like to get to that. But I apologize for taking a little extra time here, but I think it's very important considering the level of comments we received tonight. Could you briefly speak? There were many concerns, real concerns for real residents. I just, can you explain items that are in our purview and items that are not? Because I think that may very well be an important discussion.
Yeah, you know, so it really requires an understanding of what the planning board's role in this process is. And it's unfortunate if people have an expectation that it's simply something that is entirely discretionary and can be completely rejected or changed or minimized by the planning board. Because quite frankly, the planning board doesn't have that kind of authority. And in some ways, the planning board is actually misnamed. And this is all throughout New York State. So they're called planning boards, but what you really are is your planning review board because the plans are being prepared by applicants, right? And so an applicant is preparing plans. And this board's obligation is really kind of, has two areas of concern. One is whether or not the application and the proposal fits within the zoning code and the other technical requirements of the code to make sure that things that are being proposed are actually allowed where they're proposing to put them. And then secondly, you have also broader authority under the State Environmental Quality Review Act to look at potential significant environmental impacts. And if there are potential significant environmental impacts, to make sure that the applicant is doing what they can to reasonably address those impacts and mitigate those impacts. To answer your question, there were a number of items that have been raised by the public, in my opinion, tonight, that are certainly within the jurisdiction of the board. There's a lot of comments regarding traffic. And the board has asked the applicant to undertake a traffic analysis to look at the potential impact of traffic on 9D associated with this proposal. There's also a number of comments regarding noise, noise in hours of operation. That is clearly within the board's jurisdiction under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. That is clearly within the board's jurisdiction under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There are other comments regarding property values, for instance, which has been litigated a long time ago, is not an appropriate factor for the board to consider in making its decisions. It's not an environmental factor, quite frankly. People don't like to hear that, you know, because they have an, you know, a concern. It's a real world concern over a potential, you know, financial impact to them. But it's a financial issue. And it's also not an environmental issue. And what, the board is limited to looking at the things that it has jurisdiction over. And unfortunately, that is not one of them. So the other things that came up tonight in connection with being within the board's purview was public safety and public access, you know, to the site. So my suggestion would be is, first, the issue is whether or not the board is going to close the public hearing. You can, you have several options. You can keep the public hearing open. You could close the public hearing, or you could close it and allow additional written comment for a period. And that would be the, the first thing to do. The other thing that I think might be helpful here, and we also discussed this at last month's meeting in connection with Van, Van Wyck Muse, was asking the applicant to prepare a responsiveness summary as to how they propose to address the comments that have been raised by the public tonight. That might be helpful, and it doesn't necessarily bind this board, but it gives the board more information as to, you know, how the applicant is proposing to address the concerns that have been raised. There have been a lot of legitimate concerns that have been raised. And keeping track of all of them would be difficult for the board. But it might be helpful if the applicant would identify what they see as things that were issues that they could make their effort to address.
Understood. And I, I was not planning to ask you that tonight, but I, just considering how the hearing went, I thought it was helpful to not just us, but to the public as well, to have that discussion. So I do appreciate it.
I'm an attorney, and I get paid by the, by the word. So you, you give me the microphone, I'm not going to give it up.
I'll take that into consideration before I ask you the next question. So I, I think what this board needs to discuss at this point would be whether to keep the public hearing open. And I have an initial thought that the hearing should be kept open. And I will give my reason of being that one of the items we asked for from the applicant was a scope of work for a traffic study. We also asked our consultant at CPL for their input on a outline for a traffic study. And I think it would be very important to have that discussion during our project review and perhaps even authorize that study to begin. And I think it would be helpful to have that in our possession before the hearing is closed. And I, Dominic, I'll...
That, that would be my recommendation as well. I think it might be helpful to hear from the applicant regarding the timing of their preparation of the traffic study.
And also the other items that were brought up. I know they prepared a memo as well, which we'll talk about, where they addressed or spoke to some of the items that were brought up.
They did. They did.
That would be part of this as well. And I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, it's quite all right.
I have another request from Dominic. One of the members of the public raised a question of why we didn't have more than one sign for the public here. Can you please explain?
Yeah, that, that issue was also raised at last month's meeting.
Yeah, last week.
Yeah, and there was a discussion of that. The board does have the discretion to require more than one sign, but it's discretionary with this board. So the request was made last time. It's not mandatory that there be more than one sign. It's that the board could require one, more than one. There was a discussion last month, and the board did not require more than one sign.
We cannot have the signs outside the applicant's property, right?
Yeah. That's, that's correct. I mean, they can only put signs where they control to be able to put signs in. Also, I believe that there was, there was some, I saw some allegations that the sign was moved or, or taken away or, or what, or whatnot. I, I don't want to comment on that. But I do want to, you know, the obligation on the applicant was to comply with the requirements of the public hearing law in the town. And in my opinion, the applicant complied with those requirements, scheduling this particular public hearing.
Dominic, so my concern, and I've been, lived across the way from here, from the town hall, and I see the signs that are out there. Half the time, they're flopped over. Half the time, they're turned at an angle. They're written, I have good eyesight. And I, and I go to the deli right across the street. And I can't read them. And you expect people driving at 30 to 40 miles an hour to be able to see those signs and understand what's going on? The way they're, they're structured? I mean, it's just me just thinking out loud about how this whole process goes. And then even when it's on a piece of property, you're going to cause a traffic jam if you stop to read a sign.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's kind of a faulted kind of thing.
I, I think it's...
That's the way I look at it.
No, I think it's a great input. And I think that, I mean, the, the sign that is out there, if, if I understand correctly, complies with the protocol that was previously established by the town.
Oh, I, I understand that. I mean, it's protocol, but...
No, no, but where I was going with this is that maybe it's appropriate to change that protocol to make it a larger sign, so that it becomes easier for people to see.
And that would be an item that would be brought up to the town board. That's not something that this board can legislate whatsoever.
Correct.
Very good. I, I'd like to go down the line here, the board members, and get their thoughts on whether they should keep, we should keep this public hearing open. I'd leave my, my status known. VJ?
I would, I would vote to be kept open.
Bob?
Yes.
I mean, I, yeah, I would like to open. Maybe we can close and keep the online comments open for another couple of weeks, till the Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
Felix?
Yeah, I think, given that, I would like to see the traffic study. I'd like to see the traffic study. One of the biggest issues everybody's bringing up is the traffic. And I totally understand the concern. And it's kind of hard to really figure out what type of traffic is going to come in when they're just talking about spaces and we're not sure really who's coming in and out. I mean, I know they say primarily their people, but we don't know in the future what's going to happen. So I think it's important, that traffic study is going to be very important for us. So I would like to keep the traffic, to keep the public hearing open. But I do want to make one comment about the signs. And I, I appreciate that, you know, you wanted to do that for us. You have to also understand our side of it, too, if you don't mind. We don't have that authority to put it somewhere outside of the applicant's property.
Yeah.
And the problem, and, and I totally understand. I, I'd be in favor of having signs all over the place. But we don't have that authority. That's, that's town code. The town board is the one that puts that code together. So we have to go by it. And if we ever made the exception, for one, then we're going to open up that Pandora's box where then we may have that issue come up all the time. So I truly understand what you're saying, I really do. And don't think it came on deaf ears here. It really wasn't, okay? I, I would love to, I would walk up and down the road of a sign if we could, okay? So, and, and I really want everybody to comment as best we can. So we'd, we'd love to keep this open, keep the comments coming. And we, we really listen to everything you say. And if you write to us, even better, because we read it and we're able to keep that. So please, just think about it that way also. In case you forgot to come up, whatever you wanted to say, you forgot, maybe just write, and we do read it.
Fred?
Look, I, I also agree...
Just sorry, microphone.
I also agree about the traffic study. I'd like to see more about it, because that is a big concern. And I have that big concern with all of Fishkill. So, and I did drive down the road, and I did see the sign up down at the bottom of the hill. And I understand why it was there. And I understand there was no other place to put it. So I would say, let's keep it open for, at least until we get through the traffic study. Because I believe that, and maybe a noise study.
Jody?
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, you know, in connection with the public hearing and the fact that the board, and I think the public would benefit from the traffic study that, you know, is being required but hasn't been prepared yet, one option to consider would be, instead of holding the public hearing open until next month's meeting, which would be your June meeting, we'd actually be putting it over to July to give the applicant enough time to prepare that study and have it submitted to the town. You know, otherwise, you know, I, I just, there may not be any new information at the June meeting in order to have it on. And of course, you know, we have a large number of public that are interested, but they may come out, but there not, might not be anything new for them to review or talk, discuss at that time.
Does that mean we're going to keep the, also receiving letters during that time?
Of course. Yeah, of course.
So that would not, keeping the hearing open would not require a vote this evening?
Well, what I would suggest is that you would adjourn it to the July meeting. And that way, that would serve as the public's notice, you know, that it's going to be reconvened at the July meeting rather than at the June meeting. And that way, everyone knows that that's what it's going to be, rather than coming next month and expecting there's going to be a public hearing and not having one.
I would, I would support that approach of adjourning to, to the July. And I guess, would it be just continuing the hearing at that time?
That's correct. It would be continued to the July meeting. I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me.
That would be July 14th.
So to adjourn until July would require a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I will, actually, Dominic, before I do that, I should activate our alternate planning board member. I know we have a recusal.
Yes, in order, in order to acknowledge him as a voting member tonight. That's correct.
So if I just say so right now that he's a voting member?
The alternate is appointed as a voting member, correct.
Okay, our alternate...
But I believe the applicant may also want to address the board before you take your motion, perhaps.
Yes, please, up to the microphone, please.
Thank you very much. Just to inform the board, the traffic study has begun already. Based on the recommendations made, we provided the proposal. Mr. Boardner, I think you've provided some additional requests. Those have been taken to the consultant. Consultant is beginning that work as well. So that traffic study is underway, based on good faith from last week's, last month's meeting. I get that started. So I don't know that we would need to July.
Listen, I was offering it to be an accommodation, really, to the applicant, you know, so that you can have that information in and have enough time to do it. I, I have, it's not a legal issue. It's really more of a, of a timing issue. So I defer to you and the board.
What is the deadline for June submissions, David?
I'm sorry?
For the June submissions, what are the, what is the...
Uh, hold on a second, please. That would be May 25th. So there we would need to address these comments and have everything done. That's why I think Dominic is closing July.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to inform the applicant, so May 25th is probably...
Yeah, I mean, I think in addition to the traffic study, there was a lot of items brought up tonight. We'll talk about some of it during the project review. But I, I still think it's appropriate to have a compilation of the comments and a full record, so...
We respect that. Please understand, we'd be happy to accommodate you sooner than that, but we understand if that's the desire of the board.
If they're willing to have it ready for June, then I, I think we can just keep the public hearing open without a motion then.
Yeah, I, I would make, you know, my, my preference would be to suggest a motion to continue the public hearing to the June meeting. I think the only downside to that is, is that if the materials aren't ready, then it's more likely than not that the public hearing would be held open until July at that point.
We respect that.
Yeah.
If, if that's, if you believe your application could be ready. So, yeah, the public hearing will hold it open until the, you said, the June? June 9th meeting?
June 9th.
June, June 9th meeting.
Yes.
And do we still have the sign there, David?
The sign is still there. From what I understand, it's been put back in the place where it belongs, by the applicant.
So that's...
So people, they found it?
That's...
That's all that happens, is a sign, and then it's posted on the website.
Yeah.
We traveled. Let's just put it that way.
So I think we've, I'm joined in understanding that the hearing will be...
The hearing will be continued on June 9th. And I apologize for trying to be helpful and make it even more confusing.
Thank you, David. Unless there, there's no motion to be made. So I think that's, that's it for now, right? That's it for now?
Yes, sir.
I guess you have to announce that.
So where?
Do I have to?
Yeah, I mean, my, my preference and my practice is recommend a motion to keep the public hearing open to the June 9th meeting.
I, I will entertain a motion to keep the public hearing for Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan open until the June 9th meeting.
Second, or first?
Fred has made the motion.
I'll second the first.
Felix is second. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Well, we have one, but we have a, our alternate voting, so it's a seven to zero vote. I think that's it? We can get John back in here? Unless they went home on us. We are, we're not, we're not taking any additional comment at this, at this point, those during the hearing. But it will be discussed later tonight during the project review.
Of course.
We're, are we in a, I thought we were waiting for...
We're waiting for John.
Yeah, I mean...
Going on to the next item?
I mean, we're done with this, the hearing, okay?
I don't have to get John, he's here.
No, it was turning into a, a recess.
Okay. We're back. Hope you all had a good time.
I'm sure you don't want to stick around.
I certainly didn't. Okay. So we are now back to project reviews, and we're going to talk about LMD Home subdivision or to review submission made by the applicant's representative on April 27, 2022. Mr. Day, would you please give us an update?
Well, just to summarize, again, it's six lots between Baxter Town Road and Orchard Place. All lots vary in size. There's an existing house on the west end of the project, which will remain. It's the one shown on lot, I want to say one. Anyway, there's six new lots, I'm sorry, five new lots proposed. Three come off Orchard Place, and then three off of Baxter Town. We have been in front of Board of Health as far as preliminary design. We have a preliminary or conceptual approval from them, also from the county as far as the driveway entrances. And pretty much, that's where we're at.
Okay. Well, Natalie Barbara, Barbara, our conflict engineer from H2M Architects and Engineers, has provided us with a very thorough and good engineering memo. So Natalie, would you like to go over that with us?
Sure. I'll try to keep it brief, because with the applicant's last submission, a lot of our prior comments have been addressed. They did submit revised plans and a revised stormwater pollution and prevention plan. We did issue a comment with, or a comment letter with some, what I... We did issue a comment with, or a comment letter with some, what I would call relatively minor technical issues associated with the SWIP and the erosion and sediment control plan that we'd like the applicant to address with an additional submission. Just to clarify, at their last meeting, they asked the planning board to advance the freshwater wetlands permit issue. You held the public hearing tonight, opened and closed it, concluding that portion of your review. The applicant has also requested via a letter from their attorney that they would like you to authorize a Part II and III environmental assessment form be prepared by your consultants, as well as draft resolution for the preliminary plat approval in addition to the freshwater wetlands permit. You know, with that being said, we did have some relatively minor comments that are outstanding that we think that the applicant can address, again, with the submission before your next meeting. And we think it's appropriate at this time for the board to authorize the preparation of those documents if you so deem fit. That's all I have.
Okay. And I'll just note, in particular, I know you repeated a lot of your suggested recommendations from last month's memo.
Right.
And they're in this memo, and I thought that was very helpful. I have a couple of things, but meanwhile, let me just go around the board and see if you have any questions or comments that you'd like to make at this point.
I have none.
No, sir.
Okay. Anything, Felix? Anything? Okay.
No.
All right. Dominic, do you have any, any questions or comments about things like easement language or anything like that at this point?
No, the.
We're not quite there yet, but.
No, the applicant's attorney did provide initial drafts of those documents, which I reviewed quite some time ago. We provided comments back. There was also meets and bounds descriptions that were provided as well, and those have been reviewed and found acceptable. Natalie actually had some very good suggestions in connection with some of the easement language, which I've also forwarded on to the applicant's attorney with the suggestion that they incorporate those in their final drafts. But other than that, I think they're, they're very close, and I concur with Natalie's recommendation at this time.
Yeah, basically, the only thing I was going to mention is I did view the tape of last month's meeting, and I do agree with the, the board's discussion about street trees and other plannings, that they wouldn't be necessary or required for the reasons that were discussed at that meeting. I do support Natalie's recommend, recommended conditions regarding preservation of existing trees where possible, in effect is what, what it was, and also to the extent possible, protecting the existing stone wall if it's not in the way of construction. So those were good things, I think. So, yeah, let me ask the board specifically how, how you feel about authorizing Ms. Barbara to prepare the secret documents for the upcoming meeting.
I think it'd be appropriate.
Does anyone not think it would be appropriate?
I think we're ready.
Okay. All right, well, why don't we do this? Would somebody like to make a motion authorizing Ms. Barbara to prepare draft EAF Parts II and III and a draft determination of environmental significance for the board's consideration at the June 9th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Was that Bob?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Felix, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes. Now, let me ask another question. And this, I'll start with Dominic and Natalie for your opinions, but at the same meeting in June, would it be appropriate to also have a subdivision resolution and a draft wetland permit available so that if we do get through the secret documents, we might be able to go on with those documents?
I, I see no harm in doing so, and I think it would actually be helpful for the process to have at least a draft for the board to consider at that time. There's not any significant outstanding items, in my opinion, that would prevent the board from being able to review and consider a draft resolution at that time. You know, of course, you know, based on your review, that occurs, including the review of the NAGDEC, you know, there's no guarantee that you get to the resolution because you have to get through the NAGDEC first, but having it there, I think, would be helpful for the process.
I agree.
And one final part to that question, would it be appropriate for that resolution of approval to be one of both preliminary and conditional final? In looking at, you know, the details of your memo and the amount of work that we've seen to date, my own opinion is that that would probably be okay. And again, we wouldn't have to go that far if we didn't think it was ready, but I, you know, seeing everything now, I don't see why we shouldn't have that available.
I concur. You know, I mean, the purpose of like perhaps withholding conditional final approval would be if there's the potential for the project to change as a result of outside agency input. And it's hard to see that happening here. And so I don't see any harm in, in considering granting conditional final approval if it, if it reaches that point.
And the other thing, which I'll sort of address this to the board and ask, is that if we do that, would the board be willing to waive the final, the public hearing on final approval? Because that's what we would be doing, basically, if we were authorizing conditional final approval at the same time as preliminary. We already held the preliminary public hearing, we held a public hearing on the wetland buffer permit. So if the board is willing to include in the resolution a waiver of the public hearing on final approval, I think we could do that. Any input?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my recommendation. It would be, you know, it's a little bit premature to adopt a waiver at this point because you haven't granted preliminary, but we could include it in the resolution. The state law language that regarding this particular point is whether or not there's, you know, substantial conformity between the final plat and the preliminary plat.
Right.
So, you know, right now, I think the applicant says there's just one plat.
Okay, well, unless board members have any other thoughts, I will ask for a motion. And so if, Dominic, if you'd be willing to kind of take the lead on a draft resolution, working with Natalie on, you know, the details and the engineering aspects, would someone like to make a motion to authorize our attorney in consultation with Natalie to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final subdivision approval and wetland buffer permit? Those could all be in the same draft resolution, I think, for the proposed LMD Home subdivision for the June 9th planning board meeting?
So moved.
Felix moves that.
Second.
All right, Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so that all passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Question, on the resolution, at that point, if there are items that we can discuss with the board, or is that a tonight issue? Just some of the things, some of the comments in the engineering memo.
Yeah, no, if you have, if you have any questions or concerns about any of that, we could do that.
All right, so there's, under item two, two A1, it asks to stake or flag the limits of disturbance. So what we show typically on a subdivision, because we don't know what size house will be built, we don't know the shape of the home, so we show limits of disturbance based on kind of what we show. We don't have any problem doing it, but, you know, we're not able, we just, we're not going to necessarily be able to conform to the limits of disturbance that we show here because the house's driveway locations may be slightly different. So I just want to make sure we're not locking ourselves into something that is really not possibly, possibly not able to do. I mean, we're not going to increase it, it's just that.
Natalie, do you have any experience with maybe building some kind of flexibility into that kind of a condition?
Yeah, I've suggested previously to the board an option to consider even like moving the house, say, 10 feet in any direction kind of thing, as long as it complies with the setback requirements of your code. At one point, the applicant was opposed to that because they didn't know where the septic systems were going to be located or the curb cuts for the driveways. Essentially, those issues are decided now with their preliminary consent from the Department of Health and the county and town highway department. So, you know, as far as the size of the homes changing, again, you have certain coverage restrictions that you're limited to, and a lot of these lots are barely complying, or they are complying, but with little wiggle room. So with that being said, I don't see really an issue with this. I think the limits of disturbance need to be marked in the field to comply with, you know, what you've approved and considered to date.
Is it something you would want to see on a plot plan? Because at that point, on the plot plan, is the actual home that's being constructed.
Perhaps I can have a discussion with your building inspector to see what he would typically review at that stage, and maybe that, I mean, present.
Okay.
The code requires you to submit construction plans, which, you know, you're currently reviewing, so, you know, if.
So if it's okay, if you, well, if, I think it's a building department, we could work with them. If they want a plot plan, we can do that. You know, just, it's, it's hard to do it on this because, again, these are basically just placeholders. So if you're okay with that. This, under D, I'm not certain what you're looking for. For final construction plans, I'm not sure what that is.
These are requirements of the code, so these notations, if you look up these code sections, which I've referenced here, and there's specific language that needs to be as part of your final plan. So that should be on the plan that's approved for signature.
So we're going to put a note on there that we're going to comply with town board and planning board requirements?
You'll have to look at this code section and see what it requires.
Well, you've noted it. You've said that it, we've got to show compliance with town and planning board.
Yeah, I didn't quote, though, that specific section of the code, and I don't have my computer here to refer to it, but we can work on that together if you'd like.
If you don't mind, I do, I would, if we could. And location of construction trailer, we're not proposing one. If it is okay with the board, and I could, I could work directly with a conflict engineer in some of these, not to waste the board's time?
Yeah, could we get a motion to authorize our conflict engineer to discuss any of the final details with the applicant's engineer? Would someone like to move that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Felix, second by Fred. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Sure.
Hearing none? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll be right with you here.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So the next item on the agenda is a request for extension of approval. This is the Rhombout Fire District Station 2 Site Development Plan, Board to Review Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on April 27, 2022, which is a request for an extension of the Resolution of Preliminary Site Development Plan Approval due to expire on May 17, 2022. Welcome, and if you could just give us a brief explanation of why this is necessary?
Sure. Keith Schofield, Lisca McCormick &amp; Boris Architects. I'm standing in actually for POGI Engineering at the moment. We're requesting additional time for this as the extension will provide the Fire District additional time to obtain municipal and water connections and to still have the DOT approval replace the existing traffic light. They do have conceptual approval from the DOT, so that's the reason we're looking for that. We do also have the necessary easements from Ocean State Job Lot for this tie-in. So it's just basically those items to wrap up.
All right. Thanks for that update. So Dominic, do you have any, any thoughts on any of the legal aspects we should be aware of for an extension of this nature?
No, sir.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes. Yes, I mean, the, the application itself predates me, and so I don't have any particular comments regarding the conditions, but it would be appropriate for the board to consider a six-month extension.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
All set. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the request by Rhombout Fire District Station 2 for a six-month extension of the Resolution of Preliminary Site Development Plan Approval, which I believe would go to November 16, 2022?
So moved.
All right, Bob moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. So you are all set.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are now at new submittals. There are four new submittals tonight. After discussing each application, the board will allow informal public comments. So the first one is Lil V Farm LLC Two-Lot Subdivision. Applicant to subdivide a 25.17 acre parcel into two lots. Lot 1 shall consist of 2.14 acres and Lot 2 shall consist of 23.02 acres. Lot 1 includes an existing single-family dwelling and associated barn, private well, septic system, and other supporting elements that are currently situated near Baxter Town Road. Lot 2 includes all other existing features that exist on the parent lot. No land disturbance, no construction, no development, and no improvements are proposed. I'll skip the tax parcel information. This would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Rhombout Fire District, and Town of Wappinger Planning Board. And again, the planning board will allow informal comments if anyone is here from the public to make informal comments. Mr. Alonso, welcome.
Thank you. Again, my name is Bino Alonso. I'm from the Betolia Alonso Architectural Group, and I'm representing Lil V Farms and the Velardis. Dr. Velardi is here with me this evening. Generally, this action consists of a simple two-lot subdivision without any land disturbance or construction whatsoever. There's a picture of the, of the area map, as you can see up, up on the site. It's not a very good one, but the site is located, it's a 76-acre parcel. It's located on the, on the northeast end of Baxter Town Road. Here's Baxter Town Road, about 1,200 feet southeast of Stony Kill Road. So again, it's a 76.3 acre lot with 51.15 acres in the Town of Wappinger and 25 acres in the Town of Fishkill. And as you can see right here, this is the town line separating the Town of Wappinger from the Town of Fishkill. This is the 51 acres in the Town of Wappinger, and this is the 25 acres in the Town of Fishkill. So except for the, the single-family dwelling, there's a single-family dwelling. So, except for the, the single-family dwelling, there's a single-family dwelling right here and a barn right behind it, except for that, all, all the, the rest of the property functions as an equestrian center with a stable, a horse barn, caretaker's dwelling, paddocks, and riding areas. So, what's up on the screen now is a blow-up of the plat of the, of Fishkill parcel. So you can see the, the 25, the 25 acres in the Town of Fishkill is here. It would be subdivided into two lots, parcel one here, a little over two acres, that would include the existing house and the barn behind it. And the rest of the remaining 25 acres, which would be about 22 acres or so, would have all the other existing functions in it. It would also include a strip of land that would extend down to Baxter Town Road so as to provide frontage and access to the rear lot if it was ever needed. So again, this proposal does not include any land disturbance or construction whatsoever.
While you're looking at that, I just had a quick question on, really, what is the main purpose of the proposed subdivision at this point? Is there any pending sale or conveyance, or?
Doctor, was it like the?
It's more of a estate planning thing.
Come on up to the...
I'm Mario Velardi. It's more of an estate planning thing because the property would have a problem if I were to pass away to, to eventually, you know, easily have the estate sell, the properties. So, that's it. The possibility of a sale could occur, it's just not something that I'm doing right now. It's just, that's the reason for the subdivision. Thank you.
All right. So, again, with, with good planning, we wanted to make sure that the, the design and the proposal didn't back us into a corner, so we wanted to ensure that, that the strip of land on the, on the north end of the proposed parcel one would in fact be adequate for a compliant town road or driveway. So we took, we measured lines of sight, we looked at the county's regulations and what have you, and what you see on this sheet here isn't a proposal to construct a road, but it's simply a demonstration that, that the strip of land that we're, that we've defined as part of parcel two would in fact be, produce a compliant road or driveway in the future if it was ever needed. So, again, no land disturbance and no construction. The proposal is in complete compliance with the town code, including the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. We have some things that I'll call environmental non-issues because they popped up on the, on the DEC information mapper. And that, that mapper indicated that the site may be located in or near areas that were habitats for Indiana bats and may be in an area of archaeological sensitivity. However, since there won't be any land disturbance or construction whatsoever, I refer to them as, as non-issues. They're issues only because the DEC mapper brings them up and we needed to address those. So, in, as part of this process, this evening, we'd like the board to accept this application. We'd like the board to refer the application to the towns consultants, the Rombout Fire District, the Town of Wapanger, and inevitably, we'd like the, the board to make a determination that this action will not result in a population increase and that it will not therefore increase the demand for recreational resources in the town. Mario, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay.
All right.
That's it in a nutshell.
Do anyone on the board have any questions or comments at this point?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
No.
No, he's, he's explained the application well.
Okay. Jody, anything?
No.
Okay. I just have one kind of a technical question, maybe Dominic, you might know about this, but the, the parent parcel is located in Dutchess County Agricultural District 22, and it is a parcel that's receiving the agricultural exemption. Since this subdivision is not going to be resulting in any disturbance or, or construction at this point, would we need to have the applicant file an agricultural data statement because it is in the district?
Yeah, there's not an exception, unfortunately. So, not only would they have to file the, the, the certificate, but they would also have to, at some point, the application would have to be referred to the planning department as well, the county planning department.
To my knowledge, the house does not get agricultural benefits. The land does, but not the house. The house and that barn is, is separated for the tax consequences, so there's no tax benefit that I'm aware of for that property, for that two-acre piece.
If I may, I, I don't think the question was so much regarding the taxes as whether or not there was procedural requirement to file certain information and to make certain referrals.
Right. And actually, since subdivisions are not specifically referred to the Dutchess County planning, in this case, we probably would just want to, upon receiving the agricultural data statement, and that's, it's a very basic form, I've, I've seen them many times before, once we get that, we would simply refer that on to Dutchess County planning because that's where it's supposed to go. It's actually, I think, the Dutchess County Planning Board, but the planning department receives all those applications. So, I, I guess my question is, would there be any issue with accepting and referring the application, in a sense, in advance to the county planning, even though we don't have the ag data statement yet, as long as we got it quickly from the applicant?
I think authorizing that would make sense at this particular point. Was also going to suggest whether or not the application would need to be referred to the Town of Wapanger, since the property itself does go through both towns, and so 239 and then would seem...
I thought I asked that, but I may, I may have missed that.
Oh.
But it is on my list of requests.
And I, I don't catch everything, so.
Me either.
Yeah, we did have Town of Wapanger Planning Board, but I think the adjoining community goes to the actual Wapanger Town Clerk.
Correct. Correct.
So we would add that.
Both wrong.
And... Department. All right, I'll get this in a second. Okay. So, before we get to a motion, I just wanted to check to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments about this application. If there are, please come on up to the podium, but if not, we will move on. Okay, I don't see anybody. So, would someone like to make a motion to accept the application for the proposed Lil V Farm LLC Two-Lot Subdivision located at 284 Baxter Town Road, and to refer this application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Rombout Fire District, Town of Wapanger Planning Board, and now we're adding Town of Wapanger Town Clerk, and Dutchess County Planning Department for specifically the ag data statement? Was that Fred?
Yes, sir.
Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
So if you can get that ag data statement in as soon as possible, I think we'll be all set.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thanks, you too.
Thank you.
The next new submittal is the Companion Pet Hospital and Dog Training Facility, amended site development plan and special use permit. Applicant seeks to amend the existing site development plan approval and special use permit approval for the construction of a 4,406 square foot additional building to serve as a dog training facility, a 2,212 square foot expansion to the existing pet hospital, and the construction of a 3,384 square foot animal dispatch building. Applicant proposes to phase this project. Phase one shall consist of the construction of the dog training facility, and phase two will include the expansion of the existing pet hospital and construction of the animal dispatch building. Parcel is located in the GB General Business Zone at 8 US Route 9. This would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, Rombout Fire District, and it says Village of Cold Spring Planning Board, but I think it should read Town of Phillips Town Planning Board?
I was going to bring that up.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we will take care of that.
Yes, we will.
And, again, the board will allow informal comments from the public if there are any after discussion of the acceptance of this application. So, welcome, please.
Thank you. Dan Kohler with Hudson Land Design.
Hi, Dan, how are you?
I have Mr. Jamie Copeland and Mr. Washington Molina from Hudson Design, they're the project architect, and Dr. Frederick is back there over there. He is the owner and applicant. The parcel is the Companion Pet Hospital, which is an existing operation. It's the last parcel on the east side of Route 9 before the Dutchess County-Putnam County Line. It's in the GB District, and there's about 3.7 acres within the Dutchess County portion of the parcel, and about 2.3 in the Phil, Town of Phillips Town parcel. Okay, so what we're looking to do is a phased redevelopment of the project, okay? So we have the animal hospitals on the, the west side of the parcel right now, and what we're looking to do is to, with a first phase, is to propose a 4,406 square foot, a second building, and this will act as a dog training facility. Associated with that, we would have additional layout, a new parking area. We would have a, a new septic system for the new building. And the intent is to have that project done, well, as for, as a first part, hopefully within a year. The second phase of the project is something we're hoping to have done by around 2025. That was, that would be the goal. And it would include the construction of a third building on the site, which is a 3,384 square foot animal dispatch center. This is the building that would be on the, on the east side of the parcel, where, where the cursor is. And the second portion of the, of the additional phase is an addition to the existing building, which would be back over in this area over here. There's an expansion of the, of the parking, if you noticed from the previous, it's just in it. And I'll go back to the first phase. So this parking area would be configured such that there's this low point, we'd be able to work drainage and get it over to some stormwater management facilities here, with the intent of bringing the additional parking and loop road around on the side of the animal dispatch center. There is central water available to us. This is central water through the Village of Fishkill. We've had some preliminary conversations with Dave Morrison, who is going to try to dig up some mapping for us. I don't believe he was able to do any of that at this point, but he did mention that there was a six-inch main that would be to the south of the site that serves a mobile home park in the Phillips Town area that we may be able to tap into, which would help us avoid the idea of tunneling under Route 9 with a new water service connection. There's actually two water mains that run on Route 9, one on both sides. One is a raw water, though, that's not treated water for consumption or use. We believe, from our conversation with Dave, that the treated water source is on the west side of Route 9, so if we're not able to connect towards the municipal line that was used for the mobile home park, we'd be able to tunnel under Route 9 if we needed to, directional bore of some sort, so. But we do have an existing service connection now, of course, subject to MEP, Mechanical Engineering Plumbing, design of the buildings to determine what their, what the size of the waterfall, what our service would need to be. We may be able to use that, but I'm assuming that it's probably undersized for all three buildings serves, the use of all three, so. My understanding is about 60 to 65 pounds of pressure in this area per Dave, so. Just out of, of course, of history of this parcel, there was an engineer's plan that we were able to find that actually showed a, a future expansion of a septic system. That's the rectangular area over here, and that was designed to accommodate something in the neighborhood of 968 gallons a day. The soils tests that were provided on that were very good, so. What we're looking to do is introduce this project to the board, get some preliminary input, and then provide more in-depth engineering, grading, stormwater, drainage design, erosion, sediment control, lighting, landscaping, et cetera, so. And you already had noted that Town of Phillips Town, that's going to be my last comment on that, so. We'd appreciate hearing any comments you might have at this point.
Excuse me, in the audience, could you please silence your phones? It's a little disturbing. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, thanks for that information.
I have a question.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, I was just going to ask.
Oh, sorry. Animal dispatch building, what exactly do you mean by that?
Well, I could probably have them give a better description, but we did provide a narrative in the package, the architects did.
Oh, I don't think I have that.
But that's okay, I'll, I'll be happy to read it. So let me just figure out what the, the animal dispatch, so that was noted on the narrative of buildings, it was called Building Three, and, and the narrative goes as such. "We are excited to consider the development of a third structure on the property. This building would serve as office and dispatch facilities for our ambulatory large animal veterinary practice. The facility would include office space, conference room, storage, and garage space for the ambulatory vehicle, which SUVs for farm calls, and an apartment living space for an on-call veterinarian. This addition will allow for timely emergency and primary care for our large animal clients." So the, the business is doing well. As you know, probably know, the COVID experience has actually increased the amount of pet ownership, so I think that they're probably getting a lot more clients than they had before, so they're, they're, they're doing well, thankfully, and looking to expand their operations.
A large animal would be a cow?
Could be a horse.
A horse?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So which, which of those two buildings is, you're showing two build, two new buildings here?
Yeah, this would be the animal, animal dispatch.
Okay.
Right here.
And the other one?
This would be the dog training facility. There's some pens in the rear, be some fenced-in areas for those dogs. That's what these, this, that's what this represents here.
And the left, the left of that?
And this is your, your standard veterinarian offices. Yeah, this, this is the outline of the existing generally, right here.
Yes.
So you're mentioning phasing and development, but would all the substantial parts of the site improvements be done together, like at the same time, like the parking lot and?
Yeah, so the concept is to be able to present the entirety of the project to you for a full environmental assessment.
Right.
First phase, as, as I had mentioned before, we would bring the parking up to that first, this area over here. There's a natural low area right around here, so we would anticipate having, this is a low area in our parking area where we can collect stormwater and bring it down to a stormwater management basin, which we would size larger to start accommodating some of the other flow. So as you, as you see, when I, when I go to switch this over to the next page here, what you'll see is it's just a... what you'll see is it's just a straight-up extension of that parking, and then the building will be over here, so.
It's like almost doubling the parking.
Excuse me?
It's almost doubling the number of parking spots?
So, in the first phase, we'd be looking for 34 parking spaces, which exceeds the parking count. We wanted to see how that was gonna be in real life, that we're using the parking count from the code. Right now, what we're proposing for the phase, the overall phase, would be 53 parking spaces. The, the calculation from the town code came out to be around 66. We didn't necessarily believe that might be what would be out there and needed. We don't want to overpark, create too much impervious surface for no reason. I think we're going to know a lot more after the first phase is built out. If we always, if we ever had to, we could come back to the board for an amendment. The concept I was thinking of was that we would be able to come here and eventually get a resolution of approval where the phase would allow for us a little more time than usual. So a normal site plan, you have to start within a certain timeframe, finish it within a certain timeframe, but we would want to be kicking that secondary phase out to maybe 2025, like I had mentioned earlier, so. Your, your code does allow for consideration of less parking spaces than is required, and that's what we are going for.
Dominic or John, would you see any issues with the, the way they're proposing phasing the, the work? I'm sure there's a way we can figure out how to accommodate that, but, and we don't need to discuss it in detail now, but it is something that I think we've seen done before.
No, I, I certainly don't see any reason why it couldn't be done this way. I do want to mention, just, we have some new board members, and John, I know you know, Mr. Kohler was my former business partner with Hudson Land Design, and a previous project, that Greenwood Drive land development permit, Pete Sotero reviewed that on behalf of CPL. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest. My duty is to, to this board, but if the board would feel more comfortable having someone else from CPL review this application, we're happy to do that.
You mean like Pete?
Perhaps it would be Pete. We have several other engineers.
We should have him come back, just to make him come back.
I'm sure he would love that.
Well, I mean, as long as your relationship is a former one and doesn't still exist, I mean, Dominic, you can weigh in on it, but I, I would see no particular conflict, and disclosing is always a good thing, disclosure, as you've done.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's correct, and, I mean, if, if I had to recuse myself for not participating with all the various different attorneys that have been part of firms that I've been involved with over time, then they would be a fairly small group. So I, I think it's, it's good to disclose it and put it on the record, but as long as John feels that he can adequately and accurately and represent the board on this matter, then that's fine. Otherwise, you know, referring it to another member within his firm would also be appropriate. It's discretionary.
Do any members of the board have any issues with John continuing on reviewing it?
I have no objection.
No, I don't.
No comment.
I'd like to call Pete back, just to get him.
I may need him to cover a future meeting, so you, you may have not seen the last of him.
One thing I was thinking about is that at some point during the review, we might need a description of facility operations in a fair amount of detail, particularly things like for disposal of animal, animal medical wastes and things like that. The other thing I was going to mention is that the proposal could be subject to recently enacted aquifer protection overlay zone regulations. The way to, for you to check into that would be to check with the building department and just see if there may be anything in there. The main impacts of that new law really affect residential more than commercial projects, but there are also some restrictions if you're located in one of the protected aquifers, so you would just need to take a look at that and check with the building department.
Yeah, the EAF picked up on that as a, as a critical environmental area, so.
Yeah, so now beyond that, there's actually a local law that's embedded now in the zoning code, which deals with aquifer protection, that gets a little bit more specific than the critical environmental area. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention that quickly.
Thank you.
So, if there are no other questions, or maybe there are, from the board?
Are you going to be stor, are you having the animals long-term? Is it going to be sort of like a kennel, too?
I suppose when there's an animal that is injured and has to be going through a rehab process, that they will be there for a certain amount of time.
I meant more, somebody going away for a week or a month or something, you're going to be?
Oh, no, this, this, this isn't for, this isn't intended for any kennel type of use, no. This is, this is strictly for the, the health and well-being of the animals.
All right, well, if there are no more questions for now from the board, I'd like to see if anyone in the audience would like to make informal comments about this application. It looks like nobody here would like to come up and speak, so why don't we go ahead with a motion to accept the application for the amended site development plan and specialties permit for the companion pet hospital and dog training facility located at US Route nine, and to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, Rambout Fire District, and the Town of Phillips Town Planning Board for review and comment. Would somebody move that?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Bob. And any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes seven to zero.
And just as a matter of clarification for myself, if you don't mind?
Okay.
That referral, is that intended to be for your intent to act as lead agency, or is that for a 239 general municipal law referral, or is this just to get initial input?
It's the 239 referral. We don't normally do anything on lead agency until the next meeting, where our consultants have had a chance to review the application, because they actually haven't seen it yet.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next new submittal is TL Holdings of New York, three-lot subdivision. Applicant seeks to subdivide two parcels consisting of 32.18 acres and 34.21 acres into three residential lots. Lot one would consist of 9.85 acres, lot two, 7.36 acres, and lot three, 49.15 acres. Lots one and two would support single-family dwellings, and lot three is proposed as, what the applicant is referring to, as a non-realty subdivision, which does not require Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health approval at this time. Lot three is proposed with a shared driveway easement and an associated maintenance agreement. The parcels are located in the, kind of a combination of the R40 zoning district and the R4A zoning district, and located at 1754 Route 52. So this would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town highway superintendent, town planning board attorney, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District. And again, the board will allow informal comments if anyone from the public would like to make comments after we talk about the application. So, welcome, Mr. Day.
Good evening again. Pretty well summed it up, but basically it's two lots to be reconfigured so that there's in final, three lots. One of the lots, lots two, or excuse me, lot one, has already an approved septic design. Lot two will need to be submitted to the Board of Health for septic and well, and in lot, the lot A, if you will, is going to be a non-realty subdivision, which we will not be seeking Board Health approval for. Basically, that's, that's really it.
So one thing I noticed is that, so lot one has a good bit of frontage on Route 52. Lots two and three appear to what we, we would call flag lots, which have more limited street frontage, but they would be allowed under Section 150-36 of the Town of Fishkill The next thing I was wondering, and we may need to check into this more, so there was mention of some slight widening and modifications of the existing access drive, whether that would require a freshwater wetland or wetland buffer permit under the town code requirements.
Exactly. That existing, that existing lane you're talking about is to the west side of the property?
Mm-hmm.
There's no intent to do that. The, the only access that we're seeking is the shared driveway that you see where the easement's actually spelled out, but that's the only access, and that is not in the wetland area.
Okay, so the description was a little bit misleading, I think, just...
Yeah, I think if you look at the topo, there is a, there is a, there is an existing farm lane that served that site, but we're not anticipating on using it.
All right, so that's going to go in that existing easement where there would be no disturbance to the wetland?
Correct.
Okay. And then again, as with the earlier application we just talked about, there may be, this might be subject to the recently enacted aquifer protection regulation, so check with the building department on that. And it may also be subject to the newly adopted Historic and Cultural Resources Regulations, so if review is required by SHPO for any reason, that could also require a...
We have initiated that.
Okay.
We've actually, I think on EAF mapper, it came up that it was possibly our...
Yeah.
So we, we've already, the applicants retained the services of Mr. Diamond.
Okay. So we'll, we'll take a look at that when you find out more information about it. So, any questions or comments from board members about this one?
I do not have any. No.
All right, anything from our engineer or attorney? I know you haven't had a chance to look at this yet, so we will refer it to you.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Well, let me again just check to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments at this point to the board. It looks like there are none. So if there are no further questions or comments, is there a motion to accept the application for the proposed TL Holdings of New York three-lot subdivision located at 1754 Route 52, and to refer this application to the town engineer, town highway superintendent? I'm not sure why the town highway superintendent is listed, but it's there. Town planning board attorney, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Rambout Fire District for review and comment. Would someone like to move that?
Some moved.
Felix moves it again. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, that was almost the tie.
It was.
I'm going to put Jody down for that one. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right, we're all set for tonight. Okay, and the next and last new submittal for tonight is Fishkill Self-Storage Facility Site Development Plan and Specialties Permit. Applicant seeks site development plan approval and specialties permit approval for the construction of a two-story, 51,500-square-foot self-storage facility, along with associated access, parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage. The parcels are located in the RB restricted zoning district. Self-storage facilities are not listed as permitted uses in the RB zoning district. Applicant requests that the planning board apply the provisions of Section 150-19B of the Town of Fishkill Code to authorize the proposed self-storage facility through the issuance of a specialties permit in conjunction with site development plan approval. This would be to refer the application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, New York State Department of Transportation, and the Chelsea Fire District. And again, the board will allow informal comments from the public after discussion of this application. So, welcome.
Good evening.
Good seeing you again.
You as well. For the record, Alec Glad from Cuddy &amp; Fader. I'm also joined this evening by Phil Greeley from Colliers Engineering, who is our traffic engineer, and our client was planning on coming up tonight, but he was feeling a little under the weather, so he apologizes that he wasn't able to make it, but we'll hopefully be here next time. So, Debbie, can you help me pull up the plans?
You can actually, I can do it.
Yeah.
You can also do it, just so you know.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
I'm not in full control.
All right, there we go.
Which ones do you want?
If we could go to the site plan first, that would be great. Thank you. So just a quick overview on what this project is, since we were last here in March. So we're just seeking, or we are proposing a passive low-impact self-storage facility on a 4.7-acre piece of property located at 1292 Route 9D, which is located on the Route 9D-84 interchange, just south of the former Beacon Correctional property. So we are proposing a two-story, 50,000-square-foot self-storage facility with associated parking, signage, and landscaping, and access is proposed to be restricted to right-in, right-out off Route 9D, and we have shifted the access per DOT input as far south from the light as possible, and since the last meeting, we have added more detail for the raised median part to make sure that it is only right-in, right-out. And we do believe that this is the optimal utilization of this unique and potentially challenging site. This proposal will preserve 70% of its green space, or 3.5 of the 4.7 acres. The nearest point of the building will be 110 feet from the adjacent property line. It will help provide a buffer between the highway and the residential neighborhood. This is the RB district. We think this is a good transition from the highway to that residential neighborhood, and this site is, it has a lot of trees on it, we're willing to maintain that, and as you can see on the plan, add some landscaping. So like I mentioned, we were last here on March 10th, where we introduced the project, and the board asked that we provide a fuller application, so we did provide the forms, fees, EAF, but also because we are seeking a determination pursuant to the Section 150-19B that you should be permitted by special permit, you had asked for more information as to the substantial similarity of this proposal to others permitted in the RB district under the test in the code. So the focus of our last submission and the brief presentation this evening is on that substantial similarity between the proposed self-storage facility use and those existing developed properties in the Town of Fishkill. So just review the test again quickly. If a use is not specifically permitted, it may be allowed by special permit of the planning board if it is determined with input from the building inspector that it is substantially similar to other uses permitted in the district. So the code unfortunately doesn't define substantial similarity, but what Section 150-19B1 explicitly states is that the planning board should measure the proposed use against those listed as permitted in the district to determine substantial similarity. And the board here has the benefit of the fact that the RB district is in a big district, there's only four discrete areas in town that are zoned RB, and it's only about 20-plus properties, and they're all, or most of them are developed. properties, and they're all, or most of them are developed. So, let me just go back. So, here's just an overall map, and this was included right in the letter of our submission, showing the four areas of the town. So, to start with the first area, which is on the northeast portion of town, and that's our project site. Okay, so the first area, it's a single parcel, zoned RB, surrounded by residential properties, and it, and it has a two-story M&amp;T office building, and professional offices are permitted in the district. So, the scale of use required for an office and self-storage is similar. Both buildings are of similar dimensions and building height, and the character of the surrounding area is also, also substantially similar to the, to the project site. Both are accessed from a state highway and directly above several residential properties. So, effectively, I think what this shows is that office and self-storage are substantially similar under that test. However, there still are some favorable, more favorable characteristics of what we're proposing. And remember, Section 150-19B1, the CND criteria, which the board is required to consider, required that the PB Planning Board also find that the use shall not adversely impact the public health and shall not be of a greater intensity of other uses permitted in the district. And here, the parking demand of offices is much greater than that of a self-storage facility. So, therefore, what we are proposing satisfies that criteria of not being, also satisfies that criteria of not being a greater intensity. The second area of town, there's an image of the building. The second area of town is the Wingate at Dutchess, which is a long-term rehab facility with 160 beds, plus there's a Summit Court Office Park, which is comprised of about five two-story office buildings. So, like the M&amp;T property, the development is similar. There's two-story buildings of a similar scale and with associated parking facilities that are accessed from a state highway and also are either adjacent to residential properties, whether in the town or village, or across the street from some. But again, to also satisfy that less intense criteria, the self-storage facility is a lower parking demand than both those uses, as you can see how much space here is dedicated to parking, so it is also less intense. Moving on to the third area, and this is the location of the project site. We're on the south side of 84 there. So, and this arguably contains the strongest example of substantial similarity. So, this area is developed with the Horizons at Fishkill, which I believe has 90 active adult apartments, plus the Fishkill Center for Rehabilitation. And this development is substantially similar in many ways. For example, the Horizons at Fishkill fronts on 9D and I-84, just like the project site. As you can see here, it's just basically flipped on the other side of the highway. It contains a two-story building with a low parking demand, just like our use, senior uses require less of a parking demand. And it is also adjacent to an R-15, R-15 zone properties, which our project is also adjacent to. So, by almost every metric, the development across, directly across 84 is identical to what we are proposing here. However, again, our facility still requires less parking, which has the added benefit of allowing 70% of our proposed site plan to remain green, which satisfies that criteria. And then just to quickly round off the fourth area, this was a single property that was Dutchess Manor. I understand it's permanently closed, but it's in the process of being repositioned. It's more intense because it was like a wedding catering hall, which has much bigger impacts on noise, light, traffic, but it is next to residential properties and also accessed from a state highway. And then one last quick point. I know this is kind of stepping out of the test in the code a little bit, but the RB district is, is next to a lot of GB and PI zone districts where self-storage facilities are permitted, and these districts also happen to be next to residential districts. So, for a nearby example to where we are is the, this is the Route 9D EZ Storage. It's the Red Star property in the GB district. It's right next to the RB, and it also backs up onto the R-15 district, so even where it is permitted isn't too different from what we're proposing here. So, what we're hoping for tonight, I know there's a bunch of referrals, but we would also like it to be referred for the building inspector, for his input under the code, if that hasn't been done already. And also, I just want to touch on something, too, that we started to discuss last meeting. We think that this is a type-two action. There's nothing that prevents the board from making a determination on use before we proceed with that full site plan, special permit, and seeker review. What we're basically asking for is tantamount to an interpretation from the building inspector, like you would give at any time that you submit an application, before it's referred to the Planning Board. So, I will leave it at that. Again, we do have Phil Greeley here, who is our traffic engineer, which I'm, I'm sure that'll be a big discussion point as we move on. Thank you.
So, I'm going to take advantage of my being chair of this board to read about a two-page thesis on why I disagree with your interpretation of the interpretation. So, bear with me, and then I'll, then we'll, we'll talk about it some more, and I'll look to our attorney for some help on this. But, so first, self-storage facilities are not permitted uses or special permit uses, as we've been talking about, in the RB restricted zoning district. Of interest is the fact that the town board recently amended the schedules and regulations in Section 48 of the code in 2021 to specifically permit self-storage facilities in three non-residential zoning districts in the town. Planned shopping center districts by right, general business districts by specialty use permit, and planned industry in districts by right, but not in the RB restricted business zone. There must have been a reason for that. So, next on my list of items here is that, well, so as you've indicated, the applicant is requesting that the Planning Board with input from the building inspector make a determination pursuant to Section 150-19B of the Town Official Code that the proposed self-storage facility use is substantially similar to and not of greater intensity than other uses permitted in the RB district. And we just heard the applicant asserting that such a preliminary determination, and I put preliminary in quotes, is akin to an interpretation by a building inspector, zoning administrator, and would be considered a type-two action pursuant to seeker. I respectfully disagree with those assertions. I do not agree that a determination by the Planning Board to allow the proposed self-storage facilities in the RB district would be a preliminary determination tantamount to a building inspector's interpretation of whether a use is permitted or not. It's a much different process, which I believe would be subject to seeker review. The use may be allowed, and I emphasize "may" in, from the code, that's the wording in the code, may be allowed by special use permit by the Planning Board with input from the building inspector. Section 150-19B authorizes the Planning Board to make such a determination in conjunction with the provisions of Article 11 Specialty Use Permits and Article 10 Site Development Plan Approval. In fact, Article 11 includes the following. Section 150-105C states that all specialty use permits are subject to site plan review, and Section 150-106 in part states that in regard to specialty use permits, a public hearing shall be conducted in conformance with the requirements of Chapter 144 of the Code of the Town Official, including notification procedures and requirements. Section 150-107 also states that a plan for the proposed development of a lot for a specialty use permit shall be submitted with an application for a site plan. The plan should conform to the requirements of Article 10 Site Development Plan Review. So, both Articles 10 and 11 include numerous provisions that would have to be followed by the Planning Board in making any determination under Section 150-19B. That means that in order to make a determination regarding whether the proposed self-storage use would be permitted in the RB district, and there are other findings that would need to be made in addition to substantial similarity as well, the Planning Board would have to make findings on all of the other conditions and standards listed in Article 11 Specialty Use Permits, and would have to be based on review of preliminary site development plans for the proposed self-storage facility. The current submission does not meet the minimum submission requirements listed in Article 10 for preliminary site development plans, and I believe that the necessary Planning Board review for this action would have to involve complete applications for site development plan approval and specialty use permit approval, which would be subject to seeker review at the earliest possible time. In addition, Section 150-19B 1D states that the proposed use shall share characteristics in common with and not be of greater intensity, density, or generate more environmental impact, including, but not limited to having no greater adverse effects upon traffic, noise, air quality, parking, or any other reasonably relevant attribute, and those uses listed in the zoning district in which it is located. This finding can only be made, in my opinion, through the secret process and is, in fact, one of the purposes of conducting a seeker review. Therefore, this process in Section 150-19B, should the Planning Board pursue this process, and it's not required to do so, is not at all akin to a Planning Board interpretation of use, but would be part of an overall action by the Planning Board as defined in the Seeker regs, Part 617.2, in conjunction with specialty use permit approval and site development plan approval. It's probably, as an aside, more similar to a use variance issued by a ZBA, except for the hardship criteria, or a zoning amendment by a town board, which is a legislative action, and both of those items are subject to environmental review under seeker in their own unique processes. What the applicant team has provided in their current submission is appreciated and mostly similar with several updates to what was provided for the informal discussion at the March meeting, but it does not, in my opinion, meet the requirements for the Planning Board to approve a motion to accept the application and refer the application to all of the listed agencies. Instead, I would recommend that in lieu of our standard motion to accept and refer this application at this point, that the board make a limited motion to simply refer the application to our Planning Board Attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to review the applicable Town Official Code provisions and the materials submitted by the applicant, and report back to the Planning Board at the June 9th, 2022, meeting with his recommendations on how the board should proceed with this application. I also think that if this process ends up being what I anticipate it would be, we would also request the submission of a completed full environmental assessment form, Part One, to review this application. So, sorry it took so long, but that's what I do sometimes. So, I will give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that, but I wanted to see if, after all that, if the Planning Board members have any observations, either on what I said or on the application that's been submitted so far.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Joey.
Is there a house on that property right now?
There's not.
There is not?
No.
I think there was formerly a house which was taken down.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say, so to summarize, the suggestion would be not to, the suggestion by you, Mr. Cantor, would be to not accept the application, but to do a limited referral to Dominic to make an interpretation of the, the code and what's been presented by the applicant and your, there's two interpretations to have Dominic make a, an official interpretation, so to speak.
Well, I, I would say it wouldn't be an interpretation by Dominic, but it would be his recommendation on how he should proceed with this application.
I, I think that would be appropriate, if I may, Mr. Chairman, at, at this time. You know, the, the materials, you know, in the normal course of the board's procedure haven't been referred yet until they're accepted by the Planning Board. They haven't been referred to the board's consultants. I understand that the applicant has framed this as being a potential, they're looking essentially for an initial determination before they proceed with the bulk of the application and are making an argument as to why that might be appropriate under seeker. You know, they have cited some of the type-two action lists, which relate, in, in my opinion, to actions that are typically of a more ministerial nature. But in any event, Mr. Chairman, you've laid your thoughts out quite cogently tonight, and I think that the, the next step would be, because it's such a threshold issue, is to how the application should be processed moving forward. And if the board sees fit, you could refer it to me, and I will provide a memo back to the board in advance of the next meeting that could then be discussed at that meeting with the goal, I think, ultimately to give guidance and a response to the applicant so they understand what the process would be moving forward.
And so, I just want to be clear, in no way, going through that statement, would in any way reflect my opinions about the proposal. It's really a process thing, and I, I think the board would have to follow the processes and procedures that were laid out in the town's code and, you know, look at the intent of that provision of, with giving the Planning Board the authority to make a determination through a specialty use permit, and that's, that I think is key to the whole process. It's through the specialty use permit that the use would be allowed, not through an interpretation. So, but I, I'll certainly give the applicant a brief chance to respond, but I think, you know, if the board is going to agree to a motion to refer this to our attorney and get his report on it, we can really defer most of that conversation to the June meeting. But please, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I certainly understand where you're coming from. We, we obviously have differing views, so I'm glad Dominic can referee, but I think what would help us, and I know our client's watching the live webcast now, if it's working, if not, he's going to check the meeting tomorrow, is we would like some feedback, I guess, from the rest of the board, just to see where you're at, both on process and the use, because we're trying to, you know, figure out what our next steps are, and that feedback from the board would certainly be helpful.
Well, I will look to other board members to see if you have any comments or suggestions. I think, as we actually, I thought, made clearer maybe than we did at the March meeting, was that it would only be through the application for site development plan and specialty use permit that we would be able to really return and discuss the use, because that's where that process would occur. So, as for myself, I really can't give you any further input at this point on the specific applicability of the use, because I would need to see a lot more information, as is evidenced by the town code requirements, in my opinion, and that's what we'll see when we get a report back from Mr. Cordisco. But any other board members have any thoughts?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think, I, my dilemma was really, and I think we need some input from our counselors, really when this determination should be made, because when I looked at the code, it didn't seem so clear to me. So, I think, I think we're at the same point that you said. I would like to know what he has to say, because I, I know what the applicant wants, but I'm not sure if that's the right way to go about it, and also, I'm not sure how I would, I would make an intelligent decision on the substantial similarity of the use here, without going through the process like we normally would go through.
Jody, did you have something?
I 100% agree with you. I, I think that this has to be taken and done over time.
Anthony?
I don't think it's appropriate to opine any further at this point. I would support the, the suggested motion.
All right, and I'll, yeah, we'll get to that in a second. All right, and I'll, yeah, we'll get to that in a second. Robbie, any thoughts?
No, I don't have any specific thoughts. I'll wait for the counsel's recommendation.
Okay. Bob?
I haven't been able to digest all of it yet.
I know, it's a difficult process. Well, before we get to a motion, I would like to open this up. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments at this point, either on the specific application or on the process that we're talking about, please come up.
Louise, Danny Elliott, I just wanted the board to be aware that this applicant has been before the town board asking for a zoning change, and it did not move forward. So I see that this is what happens when developers don't get what they want, they move on to the next board. So I hope that you take that into consideration when you make your determination.
Thank you so much. Would anyone else in the audience like to make any informal comments? Okay, so, would somebody like to make the motion then, and this would not be at all our normal referral motion, a motion to refer the application to our planning board attorney, Dominic Cordisco, to review the applicable town official code provisions and the materials submitted by the applicant and report back to the planning board at the June 9, 2022, meeting with his recommendations on how the board should proceed with this application?
So moved.
I heard Anthony first, so I think Jody meant to second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so, stay tuned for the June meeting.
Thank you. Look forward to it.
All right. All right, yeah, I think rather than take an actual break, we're really gonna need all the time we have to get through the rest of the agenda, but if people want to, one at a time, individually take their own break, that's fine. So, now we are coming to a continuation of project reviews, and we have Healy Hyundai amended site development plan, Board to Review Draft Number 5, dated April 28, 2022, resolution of preliminary and final amended site development plan approval and to consider its adoption. So, Jody, were you indicating that you were gonna rehearse yourself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would this mean that BJ would be a voting member? I know he stepped out for a moment.
We could do that. All this is, this is a fairly complicated resolution, and BJ would not have been here for really the majority of the discussions about the proposal. We would have, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six members, so I don't think that should be a problem. Okay, so, let me, just before I turn it over to the applicant, and actually, you don't really need to say too much at this point, but you're welcome to, but what I wanted to start off by saying was that I was able to review the video of the April 14 meeting, and the draft resolution was initially drafted by Mr. Cordisco with input from John Bodendorf, and then it was passed along to Debbie Colonna and myself, and we made some substantial revisions to the draft and circulated a revised draft to the planning board for review. And because of the complexity of the application and the substantial comments received from the public at the public hearing for this application, I had actually, early on, assumed that the draft resolution should be reviewed and discussed in an open planning board meeting, and suspected that upon circulating the draft to the board, a number of board members would want the resolution to be placed on the May 12 agenda for review and discussion, and that is, in fact, what happened. So, there were several things in there, in particular, that I thought would be really more appropriate to bring back to the full board, things like waiving the public hearing for final site development plan approval, recommending an amount for a performance bond for all site improvements, which the planning board had not previously discussed, and adding a condition placing a restriction on hours of operation for loading and unloading cars from tractor trailers on the site. And also, it's my opinion that resolutions like this should be on an agenda for open planning board meetings in an effort to make the approval process completely transparent and understandable to the public, so that the public is aware of what conditions and findings the board has made and what conditions and requirements the applicant will be subject to. After all, that's part of the intent of the open meetings law. So, what I was going to do next is ask Dominic to go through the resolution, kind of in summary form, if you would be willing to do that. Before we do, I'll ask the applicants if they would like to say anything before we get into the details of the resolution, but rather than, you know, ask questions about the resolution, I was thinking, why don't we go through it and then open it up for further discussion? So if that's okay with you.
So for the record, it's Neil Alexander, my partner, Cuddy and Fader here today on behalf of the applicant. We generally didn't have any issues substantively, and there's one or two spots where we think that being a little bit more obtuse and a little less specificity in this time of inflation may be beneficial, that using real numbers may not be the best to everyone's benefit. We can talk about that when we get there.
Yeah.
Because inflation, so, you know, costs could go up, costs could go down, a pickup truck could be worth more than a sheet of lumber again. So we can get, we can get to that there, but, you know, you don't have opposition on this side. I think there's just really adding and collaborating as to some nuances. So with that, you know, why don't we launch in, you know, let Dominic lead it, but I wanted to let you know, we don't have any real objections to anything here. We just think some of the specificity in a couple of spots is not gonna nerf anyone's benefit and may require us to come back here at some future point while we're building it if we're that specific in a couple of places, so.
All right. Go ahead, Dominic.
Okay, with that said, I'm going to try to summarize this as best as I can without actually reading the document. It is 10 pages long and it is single-spaced, so there's a fairly comprehensive effort to capture all of the aspects of what transpired in connection with this application. In fact, the first three pages are really a summary of the process leading up to this point. The first real substantive issues for the board to be concerned of are found on page 3 of 10, where the board is finding that the applicant has met the criteria for both preliminary and final amended site development plan approval, including making the particular findings that are laid out in the town code, including the fact that not only has the plan been reviewed, but the plan has also been referred to the county planning department, and they also, that the stormwater plan for the project's been reviewed and it meets the requirements of Chapter 130, also that the application is not subject to the aquifer protection overlay, and also did not meet the requirements for a certificate of appropriateness in connection with historic structures and site regulations. The operative portions of the resolution continue thereon. It's a section that begins now, therefore be it resolved. And the first resolution of the board in this, that would be embodied in this resolution, would be for the waiving of the requirement for the public hearing on the final amended site development plan. And also that the application does not meet the requirements for requiring the payment of any recreation fees, because it is not a residential subdivision. And then the resolution goes on to grant both preliminary and final amended site development plan approval and authorizes the chairman's signature on the final site development plan set, subject to the satisfaction of the foregoing conditions. And these, what I did in my format, that I like to use in preparation of resolutions, is actually to organize these into very particular categories with headings so that everyone can understand what the category of the heading is and what the requirements are. The first condition would be that the applicant has to obtain outside agency approvals, all of them required for the project, including a highway work permit from the New York State Department of Transportation for the site access to New York State Route 52. They also have to obtain approval from the Dutchess County Department of Health for the sanitary sewer and water line improvements, and they have to obtain coverage under the New York State DEC Speedy's general permit for stormwater discharges from construction activities. There's also another category of conditions that requires a stormwater maintenance agreement for the site stormwater improvements. That gives the town the ability, but not the obligation, to go in and fix or maintain any stormwater improvements in the future if there is a problem with those and they're not being maintained. There's also a lot consolidation plan is required. This was discussed previously by the board. There's also a deed of merger required, because the lots are being consolidated.
Can I just jump in just really quickly, just for transparency? We have no objection to that. I'm not 100% sure that the Land Records is gonna let us file the lot consolidation plan separate from the deed as opposed to as an exhibit to the deed. So I just want to be clear on that, because it's not a realty subdivision that we're doing, it's a merger, and they may not accept it as a separate document apart from the deed. So just as long as we're clear that, you know, we're gonna try and file it separately as a separate, but I doubt they're gonna accept it as a filed map, even if we mark on it not a realty subdivision. But it will get filed as an exhibit to the deed of merger, in which case it will be of record and on title and traceable, and everyone will be on notice. I just wanted to, you know, note mechanically, we'll try, but I'm not really sure that they're gonna accept it, actually.
And each county handles this slightly differently. Actually, in Orange County, they would allow you to file this plaid, and Ulster County, who knows?
Yeah, I don't think, yeah. In Westchester, they definitely would not, because there's no health department, or Putnam, they would not, because there's no health department signature.
The fifth condition relates to the performance bond. This board has the authority to require a performance bond for certain site improvements, not for the building, but for other site improvements, including but not limited to grading, erosion, sediment controls, landscaping, stormwater management improvements, and sidewalks. The amount of the bond is set by a estimate that's prepared by the applicant and reviewed by the tenant, town engineer, and ultimately has to be accepted by the town board according to the town code.
Right, and this is, is it, am I premature if I push in here, or do you want to say more about that first?
I defer to the chair. Might as well go, you know, into each.
Yeah, so, on this one, this is again where I think putting in specific dollar amounts down to cents is not a good idea. We're not quite the Weimar Republic, thank God we're not, but you get where I'm going, is that construction costs may change. More importantly, you know, that, we could wind up with how many trips back and forth here with, as the bond amount bounces around. I don't think it's a good idea to put a bond amount in there. Your town board recently changed the code, specific in-site development approval, Section 15097D. I think a cross-reference to that, they set forth the process, and that's the better way to do that, in my opinion. I think a dollar amount here and in the maintenance bond is just, it's just, I think it's a mistake. It's just gonna require us to come back or have more dialogue, when the reality is the process set forth in the town code says that the amount of the bond will be based on an estimate submitted by the applicant, reviewed and approved by the planning board's engineer, and approved by the town board, and then it has to be in a form acceptable to the town attorney. So while I understand what the goal was here, I think that in combination of reflecting on how the process is set forth, as it's how it's supposed to occur, and with inflationary pressures right now, I mean, I will tell you, there are numerous projects where I've done IDA deals where we're going back to get the sales tax letter changed, the cap on the amount changed, because inflation was such that we need more sales tax relief, right? So it's possible that the cost of this project could go up. I mean, it's already gone up 100 basis points on the cost of financing the project in the past four months, so I just think it's a.
Isn't it like buying a stock at a lower price?
I don't think it's that way. I don't think, I'll put it this way, I don't think anybody in this room wants to pay an extra 1% on their mortgage and their house for the next 30 years.
I guess my question to Dominic would be, I mean, shouldn't we, and we've always done this, although we've never, we actually, this would be the first time we've implemented the full site improvement performance bond. We've always used to do it with landscape bonds, but we've always had a dollar amount, and I don't see how we could do this without having some dollar amount. So to me, the question would be.
Well, I mean, candidly, the code doesn't actually give you the authority to do that.
Well, no, but the resolution reflects what the estimate provided by the applicant was and what the planning board engineer's recommendation was. The final leg of that is you do need to go to the town board to get the final bond amount and document approved.
Correct. So what do we do then? What if the town board says, eh, maybe it should be 500,000?
We can include some wording in here that calls for that thing happening if it happens, in my opinion. We could have an amount subject to review and approval by the town board or something like that.
Can we soften the language to be something like, "The applicant shall post with the building department a performance bond or other security to secure to the town the satisfactory installation of site improvements, blah, 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 blah." The amount of the bond should take into consideration the estimates submitted by the applicant of 3 million, blah, 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 instead of making it, because the way you've done it is, we shall post at a specific amount. What I'm saying is, something like that.
All I'm saying is, we can adjust the wording to include the amount, but as you say, soften the wording, or in my words, modify the wording.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm, all I'm looking to do is, yes, I hear what you're saying is that you want the town board to take due notice of the estimate amount that was provided.
Exactly, exactly.
What I'm concerned about is the shall was modified. You were having it shall post at a specific amount, and that was creating anxiety for us.
So if Dominic, if you can come up with some wording satisfactory to the board that would also accommodate the applicant's concern, I think that would be the way to go.
So all we have to do is move the facet that says, "In the amount of, blah, 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 blah."
I think rather than you do that, why don't we, we'll do that internally and then we'll get feedback from you, but I hate to.
I definitely don't want to come back another month.
Yeah, I don't want to have too much of a back and forth on this either. We need to get through this, and there are a lot of other parts of it that we need to get through, so.
Yeah, I think it can be, honestly, this is pretty easy. If you take the "in the amount of" phrase and you move it from where it is on the second line, it's beginning on the second line, and you move it to, to the seventh line after the word applicant, it pops right in, and it says, and therefore would read that, "We shall post a bond" in lines one through three, and then it says, "The amount of such bond is based on an estimate submitted by the applicant in the amount of 3 million, blah, 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 reviewed by the planning board's engineer." So you created the presumption of the amount when we go to the town board, but you didn't require that we shall post a specific amount.
Okay, did you hear all that, Dominic?
I did, and I think that that's a reasonable approach to take, if the board is requiring that the performance bond be posted. The exact language of the town code, Section 97D, does say that the amount of such bond is based on an applicant, excuse me, based on an estimate submitted by the applicant, reviewed by the planning board's engineer, and approved by the town board. This inserts the fact that they have submitted an estimate to that, to that amount. It's literally just moving the amount from the shall.
Yeah, why don't we, we'll come back to this with, try to get the wording figured out, but let's move on.
Yeah.
Because we don't have time to sit here waiting. Because we don't have time to sit here waiting.
Then the next section would be the maintenance bond. I believe that here there's been an estimate that has suggested that the maintenance bond in the amount of $78,000 should be posted and will remain in place for one year after the construction is complete and the issuance of certificate of occupancy. The request from the applicant is to, I believe, either eliminate or move the amount of the bond. It is basically the same issue, even though the amount is different.
And I think, I think that amount was based on the portion of the estimate that was dealing with the landscape installation. Is that right, John?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, okay. Well, at your pleasure. The, the big one was the, was the one before it, so given that you worked.
The $3.3 million one, rather than the 78,000.
Yeah.
All right, so can we get the wording on that number five set so that the board knows where we are with that?
Yes, so this, why don't.
We can leave it as is, is what we're saying. We're offering to leave it as is, it's okay.
On number five?
On number, on number six.
On number, okay, because we're back on number five right now.
I just want to make sure we got the wording between, between the two of you, and so that the planning board knows.
Yeah, so what I was, Dominic, do you want me to do it one more time?
No, why don't, why don't I take a crack at it?
That's perfect.
If I may. Okay, so my suggestion is, is that it read as follows. "That the applicant shall post with the building department a performance bond or other security to secure to the town the satisfactory installation of site improvements required by the site development plan approval, including but not limited to grading, erosion, and sediment controls, landscaping, stormwater management improvements, sidewalks, et cetera, but not including building construction. The amount of such bond is based on an estimate submitted by the applicant, in the amount of 3,385,952.44, comma, reviewed by the planning board's engineer and approved by the town board. The performance bond shall be in a form acceptable to the town attorney, and the supporting security shall be in the form of a cash deposit, the assignment of a bank account, or the posting a letter of credit." All of that language, by the way, is taken directly from town code.
That, that works, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we already discussed the maintenance bond required in number six. There, in number seven, there's an inspection fee of $15,000. That has to be submitted prior to the commencement of construction. Number eight is one that I like, which I added to the resolution, which is strict compliance with secret mitigation measures are required. It gives teeth to the board's negative declaration because the, all the effort that went into mitigating potential environmental impacts associated with a project have to be strictly complied with. Final plan revisions that are noted here, that the owner's consent note shall be signed and dated. There's also a note that's added in number 10 here, as well as proof of satisfactory compliance with all of the conditions of the resolution, and a review memorandum which was presented to the board by the planning board engineer on April 11th. There is a requirement of all fees paid and escrow deposits made. There is also a limitation of use in number 13 that specifically ties the approval to the use that's being proposed, and there's no expansion of that use without having coming back before the board. There is also hours of operation limitation, and that states specifically that vehicles shall be offloaded from tractor trailers and/or loaded onto tractor trailers on the subject site of the car dealership only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. No vehicles destined for the subject car dealership shall be offloaded from tractor trailers on Route 52 or within the Route 52 right-of-way. And moving on, there is also a limitation on amenities, accessory structures, and outdoor fixtures, which have to be done as per the plan, and nothing else is allowed. This resolution also has a binding effect, not only on the applicant, but on any successors and interests. There is a landscaping and screening, lighting, and architectural design details, which requires that all of the things that are built on the site comply with the plans that were presented to the board, and that all landscaping and screening shall be installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, as well as requiring that the specific architectural building design details are those, including, are those that must be constructed, including the materials, colors, and textures that the board considered as part of this application. And then it's required that the applicant show proof of, of compliance with all of those conditions, and that this resolution will lapse if a building permit is not obtained by the applicant within one year after granting the approval, and that any request for an extension must be made in writing prior to the deadline of the meeting for, prior to which the approval would otherwise lapse.
Very good. Okay, so are board members comfortable with the way the resolution has ended up, including the revision from tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, and is the applicant team okay with what we ended up with?
Yes.
All right. Would somebody, or, well, let's see, if there are any other questions or comments from either Dominic or John, but I think we're ready to move on with the motion.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything further.
Okay. All right, then. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve and adopt the resolution of preliminary and final amended site development plan approval for the Healy Hyundai proposal as reviewed and revised tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign it?
So moved.
Anthony moves it, Felix seconds it.
Second.
No, we already, we already had a second. Felix, second it.
You're third.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven, is it, no. Six, six to zero.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So we have the Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses coming back for project review. I will recuse myself again from any discussion on this matter. It seemed like after the public hearing, comments were made, I couldn't hear any of it, but I could tell there was a gap between when I didn't hear people speaking anymore and when I came back in the room. So I'm assuming there was some further discussion about.
Quite a bit of substantial discussion after the comments were received.
Okay, that's what I thought.
That's about as much as I'll tell you.
Good, because I don't want to know anymore. I don't want to watch.
We need the ratings.
I don't want to watch the TV. All right. I'll be back.
Item 10 on the agenda tonight, Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan, Board to Review Submission Made by the Applicant's Representative on April 27, 2022. Before I turn it over to you, we are running short on time tonight. I want to make sure that we're very thorough. We are going to spend some time here, but I'd like to ask you to first update the board on what has changed in the most recent site plan, and then I'd like you to go through your letter dated April 27, 2022, in which you provided a discussion of some of the key items that had been brought up to date prior to tonight's hearing, and I'd like the applicant to go item by item on those. So I know you mentioned some of the concerns and potential mitigation measures. I think it's very important that we discuss those items and whether they are to the satisfaction of this board, or whether additional measures could be provided. So I'd like to take that step, and then I think what I would be looking for, and we could talk about some of the items that were brought up tonight, I think for the next meeting, we probably want a similar approach of taking some of the comments that were brought up tonight, the key topics, and we could talk about those, and have you do the same approach for the next meeting. So I, I think that kind of just summarizes where I think we need to go for tonight's meeting, and so at this point, I'll turn it over to you to describe some of the changes that have been made to the site plan since our last meeting.
Thank you. In the interest of time, we'll be succinct as we can be. Our civil engineer will go through some of the particulars on the site plan adjustments.
Yeah, I'll just briefly summarize. So the main changes that we made to the site plan since the last submission, we had received a previous comment, we were showing some excess fill based on the grading work, and we had, we regraded the site such that there's no net export of soil, so we added a couple feet of fill to the sports field, so what we're showing now is a balanced grading, no export of soil. And then, not really getting in the weeds of the technical stormwater details, but there was two comments from the town engineer regarding stormwater, and basically what we had done to address those concerns, we added a small depression close to the existing wetlands, essentially to add some additional storage area, which kind of balances out the attenuation that we were assuming for the wetlands. And just for the board's input, basically, the engineer had come back and said that the changes that we made were satisfactory, and there was no further stormwater comments.
Okay, I guess at this point, they've referenced your letter, John, so maybe I'll let you address the comments in your letter before we go back to their memo where they addressed some of the public hearing comments. So, John, I'll let you go through your memo.
Yeah, he, he is correct. They, they have addressed the remainder of the stormwater comments that we had. So as long as the layout of the site, or the grading of the site remains the same, they will not need to update the SWIP that they have submitted. I think the, the two main items in our letter that we, we'd like to touch on with the board is, one, the traffic study scope that, that was mentioned previously. We provided a scope, and the applicant provided a scope that was very similar to our scope. We felt it was missing two critical items, one being a crash analysis, and the second being an assessment of the Route 9D I-84 intersections, in addition to the intersections that they had identified. So we feel that if they agree to add those to their scope, then it's appropriate for the board to authorize them to go ahead and, and get that study done. It sounds like they've already agreed to that and started the study, so I don't know if it makes sense to, to authorize it. It sounds like they just assumed they were going to do it anyway, and it's underway. The other item was, in their responses to public comment, they did make some, they alluded to the fact that they may be able to adjust the location or the orientation of some of the ball fields and meditation areas to appease some of the, the public concern. So if they're going to do that, it, it sounds like they're potentially good ideas, but that's something we would obviously need to, to look at before we'd make any recommendations to the board as to whether they make sense or not. Because we don't know if that results in additional grading, less grading, the same amount of grading. I would imagine it wouldn't change much, but it's obviously something that we would need to look at.
Okay, so Dominic, we provided a scope, our CPL provided a scope for the traffic study, the applicant provided one, there were some slight differences. It did seem like, and I guess I can ask the applicant at this point, you said you had started a traffic study. Is that scope that you're using the scope that CPL provided?
The additional requests in CPL's scope, we have now requested of our consultants, so it will be included in the final study.
So Dominic, there's no authorization at this point? They've, they've concurred that they will follow that scope that has been provided by our consultant, so.
As they say, the proof is in the pudding when the, when the, when the traffic study comes back. We'll make sure that it complied with the, not only the scope that they prepared, but also the comments that CPL had provided as well, but ultimately, it'll be up to the board to accept the findings of that traffic study.
Okay, so there's no action at, at this point? They've agreed to follow that scope, so.
Correct.
We'll just wait to see what they provide, and our consultant would then review it.
Correct.
Okay. So I think you were out of the room when I mentioned this, Dominic. My suggestion would be at this point, the applicant's provided a memo on April 3rd to April 27th, where they provided a discussion of some of the key items that have been brought up prior to tonight and prior to some of the emails received. My suggestion was to go through that item by item and have the board's opinions on offered mitigation measures, and then at the end of that, we could circle back to some of the items that were brought up tonight that would be appropriate for a follow-on, follow-on memo for the, the next, the next meeting. I believe that would be the appropriate approach at this point, would allow us to see what they've offered. We can offer some suggestions as they go topic by topic. That was.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's good as far as it goes. I mean, the public hearing itself is still open, so this is like, if you will, would be kind of an interim step, because there may be additional public comment regarding traffic or, or any of the other items that the public's entitled to speak on. But I think it's kind of, i- if you will, it's kind of like checking where the applicant is identifying relative areas of public concern, and perhaps getting input from the board at this point, but it would be premature to, I think, head to, kind of, any kind of determination on any one of these issues, because the public hearing is still open.
Sure, and I, I think it would just be appropriate for them to go through, they've, you know, gone topic by topic here. I think they have about, about a dozen topics here. Go through each one, they've offered some potential mitigation measures. I think it'd be appropriate for them to discuss it and have our board decide whether they believe any other additional mitigation measures may be appropriate. So if you may, if you can go through the memo that you have. I think traffic was the first item.
Yes, it was. And we believe that in good faith, we've started that study. We will include the comments that were requested in addition to what we had in our scope, and we'll see what the findings produce. I think it's wise to, in the interest of the neighbors, is to extend that as it's been requested to extend, and look at the crash studies as well. We'll go on to lighting.
Actually, before we do that, I, I, you briefly mentioned parking in that portion of the memo.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
And there's been some substantial comment about the number of spaces. Is there an opportunity to additionally remove some spaces? I mean, we're down to 247. Is the applicant willing to consider a further reduction? Because from my understanding from previous responses, there was a statement that, you know, most of the people using the site would be from the, you know, surrounding immediate areas, so I, I'd like to know from, from the applicant their feelings on additional reductions in parking to support your statement that the local residents or local, you know, area residents would be using that site.
Well, thank you for that. First of all, the applicant has made the measures to meet the zoning code. Now, that, that was our intent all along, to meet what the town requires. We have looked at the possibility of reducing, we have reduced some to, in our, in our previous endeavors, because it was even higher. We've taken those and into green space with pavers, green space pavers. The additional spaces reduction, we'd like to get a recommendation from the board. We believe that the numbers that are there, justified by virtue of who uses it and the coming, coming from the residences to the building, we do not, and want to make it absolutely clear to this board, this is not a facility to serve outside interests of Jehovah's Witnesses. This is for the, the group that lives in River Crest. That's what the office building is for, that's what the recreation facilities are for, so it's not that we're going to bring in, as was commented tonight, busloads of people for soccer tournaments, it's just not what we do.
So, and I know you had mentioned this, and you had done this, so you had reduced the parking, and I know you landbanked some already.
Right.
I guess my question to, to the applicant would be, how many spaces would be needed to carry out the operation? to carry out the operations that are anticipated for the site? How far of a reduction would you need in order to achieve? I don't know if our consultants agree or disagree with, but I'd like to see how, do you need 60? Do you need 100? How many spaces do you truly need? And then, we can talk about whether or not that could be reduced. But, you know, certainly a concern we have and a concern the public has that that many spaces, why is it needed? And I know you've made the effort, but I'd like to maybe see what you're...
We'd be happy to, in our next submission, come back to you with a suggestion on what we might be able to accomplish. So, if that's agreeable to you, we'll take that up in the next package.
All right. Before we go to lighting, I'd like to just go down the line with the board here. Anybody have any additional comments or thoughts on the traffic and parking, anticipated other mitigation measures, or any other items that they want to talk about at this point?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just, I hear exactly what the applicant's saying about it's primarily going to be used for the people there. But my concern is always, well, what's going to happen in the future? Will that ever change? And if that thinking or that mindset that you have right now changes, then, you know, what's going to happen there? What's, you know, what will be the future impact of that? So, it's just something that comes up, because it's one of those things. If it's there, at some point, it could be utilized by other people. So, it's just something to think about. And I don't know how, when we do our traffic studies, how we would actually project that.
Yeah, the answer is, you really can unless they're going to disclose at this point that they intend to change it at some point in the future. They have to base their study based on their statement of use.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on that as well? This evening, some questions were raised about a video facility, AV facility, or printing facilities. None of that is intended for this site anywhere that we know in the future. We are developing another AV site somewhere else. We are, we have a printing facility in Walke Hill. This is for the benefit of this family that lives there, that large group that lives there. It's to provide them the office space they need, medical, as is shown on the drawings. So, that is for that use and that use only. Now, can we guarantee what happens 20 years from now? I can't. But I can tell you that the intended use is as we've described it.
Also, as one of the members of the public rate, I mean, if it is intended for the local River Crest people, do you really need 250 parking lots? Can you reduce it substantially?
We certainly will take that under advisement and come back to you with some...
That was one of the questions, the public rate, yeah.
Yeah, if I could just make a suggestion, I believe early on in the process, you provided some kind of justification for the number of spots that you were proposing. I think it would be helpful if you put some kind of parking analysis table on the plan itself that pretty much, you know, spells out why you have the number of spots you have, where they're going to be, you know, who is going to be using them, peak events, that kind of thing. That's done often in many municipalities, and I think that would help not only the board, but the public if that were made part of the actual plan set.
Appreciate the suggestion.
And on that particular point, the code does provide that a parking area can be reduced by 50% if it's, you know, acceptable to the applicant and to the board, where that area would be reserved for additional parking or construction of parking in the future. Basically, it would be land banked parking. That's one option. But I also, if I may briefly touch on the comment that you had, Ravi, about the intended of the use. And while we don't know what happens in the future, we can kind of protect ourselves in the sense that, just similar to the Healy Project, where I mentioned that I included a narrative regarding the limitation of the use. The use is limited to what the applicant is saying that they're going to use the property for. So, if and when, you know, a project comes before you for approval, my suggestion would be to include that restriction there as well, so that if there is a substantial change in the future where a use that's not contemplated now is being introduced at a later time that could potentially have impacts, you know, or planning concerns, they may very well have to return to the board at that time.
So, you mentioned a reduction of, by code of 50%. So, if the applicant by chance, I'm throwing an arbitrary number out, if they said they only needed 50 spaces, that that would be more than 50% reduction, so that would not be...
Yeah, I think the current proposal is, what, 247?
247.
246 spaces, you know, so 50% of that.
Of the required.
Of that. But bear in mind, it's, I don't think it's entirely up to the board to make that determination because it also has to be acceptable to the applicant for their intended use of that area.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to know, yeah, how far can they truly...
You know, you can't, it's not a unilateral decision, by the way, to, you know, to say, whatever, it's this applicant or any commercial establishment to say, well, we're only going to give you half the parking that you're asking for.
Simon. Yeah, thank you.
But it is an option that the code allows to make that reduction if it is agreeable to the applicant and makes sense for the board.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to see what could potentially be done in terms of reduction.
Yeah, for the next meeting, if you can come up, for the next meeting, if you can come up with a number that you would like, some lower number.
We'll take a look at that.
I do have a question. In your earlier comments, you did mention that this facility would be primarily for the River Crest community, right?
That's correct.
And it's not the intent that to bring busloads of people from outside, right?
That's correct.
Is there any way or mechanism that you thought about how to restrict that or how to verify, validate that? Like, I mean...
How to enforce it.
Enforce it kind of thing? Like a gated community with a gate with passes only from the River Crest family to come in and use the facility, something like, I'm just putting it out, but are there any...
Hearing some of the public comment about the restricted use of the site, just for our folks, it seemed like that wasn't a real popular view for consideration this evening either. So, I don't know that I have an answer for you tonight, but we certainly can take a look at it for you.
Yeah, one of the public comment was about that, right? So, they have an opinion that outside people may come in and start using the facility, but you said that it's only for River Crest family members.
Right. Yeah, and again, that can be part of your restriction as to use, not only use of the building, but use of the site facilities as well, as Dominic has commented on. So, that might be another way to manage that request.
Yeah.
Okay. Lighting?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss lighting, please.
Sure. So, just to clear up a few things. Some statements have been made in the public, by the public, for us, about us, relative to lighting. On the fields, ball field and soccer pitch, there can be no lighting provided. So, it is without light completely, okay? Want to make sure that that's understood. Also, the idea that we would have these lights on till 11 o'clock at night, that's not accurate as well. So, what we have done is provided the cut sheets for high cutoff, low glare, dark sky compliant light fixtures for the parking areas. They have an automatic shut off in our organization at 10 o'clock and an automatic come on at 6:00 a.m. That's, and then, security lights that stay on in those parking areas. That's it. The tennis court and basketball court, they have lights on them. They are, that's a restricted use. Right now, according to the EAF, that was six to nine for its usage.
I guess my question would be whether lighting for the tennis courts and basketball courts are needed. I mean, to have that happening after dark seems to be a concern of residents, so my question is whether that, you know, we would even want to have lighting there because that would encourage activity after sundown.
We would consider that dawn to dusk possibility, if you'd like to have that considered.
I think so. I mean, you heard the public comment tonight. I think anything that the applicant can do, but I think the idea of having lights on until 9 o'clock encourages activity on those surfaces till that hour, and, you know, I think we would like to see that, you know, not take place.
So, is the board satisfied with the light fixtures, the comments about lighting that was requested previously?
I would, I would ask you, John, if you had a chance to review the...
Yeah, the lighting fixtures they're proposing are in compliance with what's typically being used in sites like these, not only in Fishkill, but in other municipalities that we work in throughout the Hudson Valley.
Okay. And one further point on lighting?
Please.
No further, no lighting will be installed in the northernmost pavilions that are close to the northern property lines there. Those are also the pavilions that we discussed moving south and west, and there's no, there's no lighting in those.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, any other board comments on lighting? Okay, go to the next topic.
Very good. Noise was the other. The pavilions were commented on, the ball field, baseball field location and soccer pitch. We looked at all three of those for movement away from the property lines because that's where the noise obviously is generated and was commented on very strongly tonight. So, moving those facilities away from the neighbor's property line is our intent. We can turn them as well so as to get the noisiest part of those functions, the goal areas, the plate area, further away, as was commented in our notes, away from the property lines. Additionally, we'll get into this on tree buffering, but part of what will help to reduce the noise is get a tree buffer close to those activities. And that's part of our proposal as well.
Have you considered any additional noise barriers? I know tree buffering is something, has noise barriers along that property line been considered for additional reduction? I mean, tree buffer is certainly helpful, but I'd like to...
But the noise barriers that are typically done along highways, et cetera, are strongly viewed as ISOs. Along that property line, where those folks live above us and looking down on those or try to get through those with a view, we think that that would be actually more offensive. We'd like to try to do it with as much natural material and approach as we possibly can. But again, we're open to it. The board would want to offer as possible solutions as well, but building walls or barriers seems to us to be counterproductive.
And then, there was another bullet here about hours of use for the fields. I didn't see any hours offered, but based on some of the comments received tonight, I, you know, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m., I mean, the later in the morning, the better. I think there were some concerns about residents hearing activity as early as 6:00 a.m. I don't, I wouldn't want that. I don't think anybody wants that. So, I'd like the applicant to suggest a time. I, you know, I've thrown out a few. I think 10:00 a.m. would be great. 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. would be great. It'd be a good start. I just think 6:00 a.m. is, you know, what's happening now is not, it wouldn't be acceptable to me, so...
So, the comment earlier about a dawn to dusk kind of usage, how does the board feel about that?
Dawn is at 6:00 a.m.
Dawn is at 6:00 a.m.
I think 6:00 a.m. is far too early.
Okay.
Even on a weekday, I try to sleep till 7:00, so. Not successful, but I try. But I wouldn't be happy with that if it were me living there. So, I'd like to see, at least, I'll give you the opportunity, the applicant the opportunity to make a suggestion, but 6:00 a.m. is, you know...
Very good. We'll come back to you with a suggestion.
Yeah, please.
I would prefer something after 8:00, so 8:00 a.m., so...
All these folks who live in that community, work in that community, so they'll be, no time before work to use those facilities, which is currently what some of them do. So, we'll have to look at the balance that we can bring to you, some balanced solution to that.
I think we're at the point where, you know, make a suggestion and we could talk about it. But I mean, there's no hours at this point. I'm just throwing out some hours and bringing up a comment, so...
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I don't think we have to go too deep on that, but it's certainly an item for me. And then, I think the next, before I do that, any other thoughts on that item?
No, you covered what I wanted to talk about.
And then, the tree buffer was the next item.
So, the tree buffer for noise control is obviously preferred if it's close in to those functions. So, near and screening off the pavilions, some of the key areas in sports, some areas to the southeast where lights could project, all of that would be part of the tree buffering. The idea that we could perhaps work with the town and the homeowners association to get those off of the cap, because right now, the only area that's not in a wetlands boundary or stream boundary is on the cap for those trees to be planted. The concern we have is that that exposes that cap to potential deterioration with the roots. So, could we move those back up into the wooded areas that exist? We'd have to have cooperation and some planning with all of you and the residents as well to provide what they would like to see and what would actually be performable.
I would advise, I would advise the applicant to reach out to that board. We have no connection to that board. I would certainly advise that and get their thoughts and maybe their willingness to work with you on a tree buffer. But I mean, I don't know that that's anything that we could pull anybody...
I think some of that land you control, though, if I'm not mistaken.
What's that?
Some of the land on that wooded area is controlled by the town, some by the homeowners association. That's what I understood.
It's town property.
But nonetheless, if we can work together with those who control that land, we'd be willing to take a look at how that might better everybody's interest.
Yeah, if that's town property, then yeah, I would imagine communicating with the town board, I guess, would be the appropriate way to do. But yeah, I think approaching both the HOA and the town board about both would be very much appropriate and appreciated in consideration of this application. Now, the tree buffer and also the field orientations, those were not shown or reflected on the plans that were recently...
They will be. We wanted to see, again, what the public would offer additionally.
Understood.
Relative to that, and then, we would position that. And it would also take some adjustment in our site plan, especially if we did something with grading to provide berms at certain spots for the trees to be planted on, things like that.
Understood. Any other thoughts on that topic? We'll move on to zoning.
On the zoning, the indications are that we're within the as-of-right for zoning. We're trying to do everything we can to be good neighbors and comply as best we can with some of the concerns and interests that are justifiable by our neighbors. So, we hope you see in us a willingness to try to do things that would mitigate some of the concerns that have been raised. We do want to provide accurate information regarding some things. Some statements have been made that really aren't where we are with this whole thing. The buses and competition on the fields, none of that is accurate. The lighting on the fields and all that takes place associated with that, none of that is accurate, and we've tied all that down with you tonight.
Any other thoughts or questions regarding zoning from the board? All right. Environmental is the next topic you had.
John, there's been some comments about the degradation of wetlands. We'd like to, again, emphasize very clearly that all wetlands, all wetland boundaries have been remapped by us this spring, and all of those have been maintained. None of those will be violated by what we do. The cap is a very important piece of this, environmental cap that's there, the two-foot cap. We're very sensitive to that. the two-foot cap. We're very sensitive to that. We've had good management of that, even to the point where DEC now has allowed us to extend some of the monitoring from one year to three years. But we're very serious about doing what's in the best interest environmentally on that side, which by the way, isn't an easy site, as you all know. And we did provide a history of the use of that site and the, the dates, the critical dates of when we came into the picture. I hope you get a chance to take a look at that. That's very revealing.
I think you, I think you kind of hit the wetlands and the environmental in one. So anybody on the board have any thoughts or mitigation or concerns that they want to bring up at this point right now? Okay, so I appreciate you going through the memo. I know there, I'm going to highlight a few items that were brought up tonight. It's not meant to be all inclusive, but certainly items that, and some of these I think you may have mentioned that you were going to address. Accident records was something that came up. Question about pedestrian access to the Hudson River, access through the site. I know that was something that had come up. Question regarding anticipated frequency of vehicles to the site, which I think would be part of the traffic study. You've already touched on it, but if you can in a memo elaborate on the uses of the facilities again, so that we can have a clear discussion of that and have that in a record.
Mr. Brozur, could I address one thing that I may have not said to you, to the board? The truck traffic that's there, nothing is going to change with that. We don't bring semis to that site on a regular basis. These are straight bodies and box trucks that go to Rivercrest that would now come to that location.
Could you provide some information if the next application of how frequent that that is?
Sure.
That traffic is, because it is part of Jehovah's Witness, so it is.
Sure. Frequency of truck traffic to the site.
Today, yes. What's currently occurring.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
You sure?
Okay, so I have a question.
Yes.
Because I keep hearing it come up. You're saying the parking spaces are for the people who are in the complex there.
That's correct.
Are those individuals working somewhere else there and that's why they need office space? Are they working out of their homes?
As many have done during, during this pandemic, many are working out of their homes and their, our intent is to get them out of their homes and into office space and provide some of the things that we haven't been able to provide there at that complex. Medical, for instance, there's a small clubhouse there on the property, Rivercrest property, that houses some of the pantry and, and food areas that people can come and get food for consumption. And then those are going to move over to that location.
Okay, so essentially, because I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding, I want to understand, and I'm probably not the only one who's not understanding clearly.
Sure.
They're becoming a self-contained community kind of sorta? They get food there, they get their medical there, they work there, but now they're going to be working across the street?
That's an accurate statement, yes.
Okay.
On many of our complexes, it's a, it's a live-work environment.
Okay, so how, how would you prevent somebody like, let's say, me? I, I'm driving down the road and I want to continue. How, would you prevent me from going on that property? How would I be prevented from getting onto that property?
Any, any public road, we can't enforce any.
I'm saying I'm going to drive down and I'm going to go right to where your park is because I just moved to the community and I see this beautiful park and I want to go there. Is there going to be a gate stopping me? Is there a turnaround to, to prevent me from going down there?
So there, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Industrial Way.
I've been down there.
Off, off that cul-de-sac, we would come with our two driveways as, as has been delineated. And yes, there are gates at those locations.
Okay. I think, I think if you perhaps made it a little more clear, because obviously there's a lot of concern with the general public in that vicinity, I, I think that might, you know, either alleviate some concerns for citizens or perhaps bring up a couple of other areas where it might, there might be a little further conversation.
Okay.
To try to keep everybody happy. This is a situation where it's tricky.
Yes, thank you. Maybe clearer access to the river, things like that.
That was, that was actually brought up.
Yeah, because.
That was brought up during the hearing.
Yeah, we don't have any, that I'm aware of, any access to launch a boat, that I'm aware of.
If I were living there, I would hope, we wouldn't be opening it up for people to come launching boats down there, but.
Across the tracks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where there, is there a place? I don't know.
I'm not sure if we can accommodate that, but we'll certainly look at the, the comments that you're making though, relative.
And I know public safety was one that was a concern as well, so I'm not going to, you know, there were plenty of other items and, you know, I'd like to see, you know, a follow-up memo so we can talk about this further at the next meeting and also highlight some of the changes you've made as a result of our discussion tonight. I just think that's going to be really important for us to get to a determination of significance here of what the mitigation steps are. And the traffic study will be probably the cornerstone of that, but certainly some of the other items are going to be very important as well. So I'm going to go across the board. Any other items that we want to discuss at this stage? I think there's no action that this board needs to take tonight.
No, sir.
I would suggest, maybe not this month, but at some point, we might want to do a site visit to kind of get a feel for, you know, because, you know, public is talking about how close they are to certain areas and it might be an idea to be able to see where everything is going to be exactly.
Be happy to work with you if, if you can do it with, pardon my ignorance, but sunshine laws, I don't know if that creates some challenge for the board to come together, but if not, we would certainly be happy to host you there and take you anywhere you want to go and let you see what you got to see.
At this point, perhaps at the next meeting, you offer some suggested times for us, usually Saturday mornings are when we do, we've done previous site visits, so you suggest that.
Well, look at it for the next meeting.
I think I would ask the applicant to provide some dates where that would be appropriate to put them on the spot tonight.
No, no, I'm not asking for it.
But I think, you know, at the next meeting, to have them offer a date or two, preferably a Saturday morning where our, your board can walk the site.
I sleep in on Saturday mornings sometimes.
I hear you guys up at six.
Yeah.
Very good. We'll make some suggestions.
I can bring my hog.
Okay. I think that's all for us on this item tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Two more.
Who else?
Sorry, John, I left you a lot of time here.
Well, let's see what the board's feeling is at this point. We have two applications left and one of them, the next one, this one, is going to take, I think, a little while. So really normally we would end the meeting at 11:00 unless there was a glimmer of light that we'd be able to get through things relatively soon, but.
Are we legally obligated to stop or?
Well, there's no.
I have a problem with the video. I'm sorry, John, to interrupt you, but the video, when it goes over a certain amount, it will not upload.
There's no legal obligation, but our, our practice has been that 11:00 is normally the ending time, although lately we've been going past by 10, 15, 20 minutes. But I could anticipate this meeting going on for another 45 minutes based on what I, you know, what materials that have been submitting. Anyway, I wanted to go around the board and see what you felt about should we continue tonight and try to get as much as we can in the next whatever, half hour or so, or?
It's late, but I'd be inclined to continue these, you know, applicants if we, if we can do it.
I'm usually up till one, so let's go.
Well, we're not going to go that way. I can tell you that. Well, does anyone have any objections to continuing and seeing how we do?
We're here.
We'll talk fast. Okay, well, let's give it a try. So let's see where we left off. We are on.
Item number 11, Van Wyck Mews amended site development plan, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on April 27, 2022, draft EA F part two, draft EA F part three, and determination of significance. Let's go.
Thank you. So just so those in the audience who are still here, and there are quite a few, I see, the public hearing was held and closed on March 10, 2022 with an additional written comment period which ended March 18. There are no additional public comments at tonight's meeting, of course, and we've received a number of written comments from residents after the public hearing comment period closed, and those have been entered into the project record file and provided to the planning board and the applicant. So I'll turn it over at this point to the applicants to bring us up to date on the plans, but also there was a response summary to public hearing comments that you put together. Let's see how far we can get through those things and then see where we go.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just for the record, my name is David Cooper, partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steinmetz, here representing the applicant Toll Brothers. Excuse me. We appreciate going over, over your 11:00 time. We've been here for all night, so thank you for allowing us to continue. With me tonight is Greg Otis and Rob Dowd from Toll Brothers, as well as Richard Williams from Inside Engineering, the project engineer, and Phil Greeley, the project engineer on traffic, as well as my colleague Bryant Sensabaugh. We are here tonight primarily asking the board to adopt the draft negative declaration that's been before you, I think since April 11 or so. From a procedural perspective, we have, the public hearing has been closed. There were, the last meeting, your board asked us to respond to certain comments. We did submit a memo dated April 26 responding to those comments. As set forth in the letter, we respectfully submit that the record before you contains all the information necessary to support a negative declaration, the one that's before you. I would say that many of the comments that the board heard and has received during the public comment period and even after deal with issues that I would suggest are in the domain of the HOA. In other words, they're maintenance issues about existing conditions on site, not within the scope of your SECR review for this project and really not within the purview of the planning board under New York state law. That being said, I just want the board to know Toll Brothers is meeting with the HOA and then with the residents to discuss those issues. So it's not, we're not saying that we're not, we're ignoring them. It's just that from, from perspective of what's before the planning board tonight, with respect to SECR, we're trying to, to answer the questions that we believe need to be answered for a determination of significance. With respect to the scope of SECR, I think we've discussed this before, but just to re, to frame the issue, the SECR review here is somewhat limited because the board issued a negative declaration in 2006. Remember, this is the last phase of this project. The negative declaration covered, covered this phase. The question is, does the change from what was reviewed in 2006 versus what's being proposed now, does that delta result in any potentially significant adverse impacts that would exceed the levels or the thresholds that the board found acceptable back in 2006? So with that being said, we went through the comments that, that were brought up with respect to potential impacts and relayed them back to what's in the record as well as what's in, what was in your neg deck. We're happy to go through them, although because the time is late, I think what we'd rather do is if the board has any questions or wants to discuss any one of our responses, we're happy to, to go through them. They are laid out in our letter, but Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you as to how you want us to approach it.
Well, why don't we first go around the board members and see, I know I've had a chance to look through what you put together and I know hopefully the other board members have, but do any board members have any comments or observations or questions about what the applicant has put together?
Mr. Chairman, I do if, if I may.
Yes.
First, I'm glad that you are meeting with the HOA. I think that's a step in the right direction and I hope that we can find some common ground and they are basically your clients anyway. At some point they were, you know, so it'd be nice if they, they could be dealt with in a way that makes sense for them, right? And I hope that maybe you can in future meetings just report back to us any good news that's going on there, okay? I, I, looking at the response, I'm going to start with amenity spaces. You start with the Rutgers University Center Urban Policy Research. That research was done when? 2006, correct?
2006, basically, of the 2000, yeah.
So the couple of things that I think my fellow members here on the board should take into consideration with this is that even though it was a very, very comprehensive study, we are looking at data that goes from 1990 to 2000. So the data is a little bit old and also all of these are done by statewide, so they're not specific to any area. But of course they, you know, so these are two just small considerations, but I really want to get into the numbers that you guys gave us. And who actually prepared the study? Who did the study?
Well, the, the numbers themselves are from Rutgers.
No, no, I know, but who on your team got those numbers?
Oh, either whether it was the engineers or Toll Brothers, we compiled it all into one.
Okay, you compiled it. Because I, I looked for these numbers. I, I looked and the numbers I found that you gave us, the 1.39 for the one bedrooms and 2.24 for the two bedrooms and the 2.74, these are all numbers that were from the Connecticut study, not from the New York study.
Right, but the, the point, the point that the numbers show, it's not, it's not necessarily in this town right now, right?
I understand.
This is an overall average, but the point is the change from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom is not, is, well, let me, let me just finish because I think it's important.
Sure.
Here. The change from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom is not a significant jump. In other words, you're not, it's not one person, right? So back in 2006, the negative declaration assumed that there would be 730 residents living in, in the development in total. And so at that time, the planning board found that the size of, of the swimming pool, the size of, of the recreational areas was sufficient, right? So, so now that there's, there's a change to some three-bedroom units, the, the comment was, well, there's going to be a lot more people here. But what the numbers show is, it's not, it's not a, you know, it's not a one-to-one. In other words, one unit is not going to, one bedroom is not going to equal one extra person per unit.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. The problem I'm having is that the numbers that are provided here are not New York numbers. They are, I'm sorry, just give me a second. There are numbers that were from the state of Connecticut. Also, the condo unit numbers were rental unit numbers, not own unit numbers. And when I looked at the New York numbers, there is an increase. So, I mean, there's.
Right, we're not, we're not, we're not disagreeing that there's an increase. The issue, the issue before the board is, is there an increase such that the, the impact on recreational resources could be quantified as significant when you look at your 2006 neg deck? That the change from what was proposed and what was assumed would be occurring on site versus what is, what, what's now being proposed? That change we submit is not so significant such that. That change we submit is not so significant such that the board would, could conclude, well, we need another swimming pool. We need two swimming pools now, or we need another, we need another, another clubhouse, right? That's, that's the question before the board, not, well, a couple more people are going to be using this, this facility. We can't allow that to happen. Because that's not the issue. The issue isn't, well, if a couple more, 10, 20 more people use this, we can't allow that, right? The question is, is that a significant impact on our SECR? And what I would say is if, if, if the board doesn't, doesn't think that these numbers support that, well, you have a consultant, planning consultant that can also vet those numbers. I, I submit to you whether you, whether you use numbers, I, I, believe it. I, I, I think the Connecticut numbers that you're referring to and the New York numbers and the New Jersey numbers are all taken from the tri-state area. But to the extent that there's any, any change, I don't believe you're going to find something that's going to say it's, it's a significant impact such that we need to now evaluate whether there's, there's got to be another lane added to the.
I, I don't agree, because I mean, when I looked at the numbers, I, I, I'll, I'll give it out to my board members here. It's about a 27% increase in the numbers that were given in the New York study. What, what bothered me about this is that you put it out there almost as fact that the, the impact is going to be less when actually the numbers are wrong. And if you were going to give us numbers that you're saying wouldn't be a big impact, should have given us the correct numbers.
I, I, the only, the only thing I would disagree with, with that is the framing that as the incorrect numbers. If you're, if you're saying that there are other numbers.
Yes, I am.
There's other, then ask, ask your planning consultant to apply those numbers.
Okay.
And I submit to you that, that the, the conclusion is going to be the same. I, I'm not going to, the issue of, of what, where these came from, I'm, and I'm, I'll defer over, but.
These Rutgers numbers are pretty industry standard numbers in our business and are used, you know, regularly throughout the industry in EISs. This is, the Rutgers study is a very well-known study. Now, if you do a quick Google search, you can find companies out there that are routinely claiming to publish data on more recent census. And if you have certain numbers, it would be helpful maybe through your consultants, you share which studies you're looking at so that we can vet them for accuracy.
I looked at the actual Rutgers numbers.
From the 2006 study?
Yes, I did.
That's what we used.
But you used the Connecticut numbers. I, I used the New York numbers. I mean, I can give you, if you want to see it.
And, and rather than, rather than debate in public.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
I, I think, no, I think we, what, as David mentioned, the appropriate thing to do is rely on your consultants. You know, these numbers that were used are routinely used. We use them regularly in generating water and wastewater demands to compare 30-day average versus maximum day populations. In all the municipalities we've done that in, they have not been questioned. So I think it would be helpful for us, rather than me standing at a podium and you stand behind a screen.
Sure.
If you share that information so that we can check what sorts you're looking at.
Purpose was not to say, hey, let's, we, we, let's use Connecticut, Connecticut numbers versus New York numbers or something. Those are the numbers that we typically use on any application. If you have other numbers, let's, let's apply it. At the end of the day, the question is, is it significant?
Let me ask you, is there a difference because now people are not, they're much, people are home a lot more to use those facilities than they were in 2006?
Well, that, that's a, that's a, that's a temporary, even though it doesn't feel like it, but that's a temporary condition. And so just like, let me just answer, here's the question. Just like traffic studies, for example, I believe your consultant would, would, would concur. Traffic studies are typically not being counted right now because traffic is, is different than what's normal because of COVID conditions.
Yeah, but, yeah, but aren't you planning on your, having people work at home and you're converting some of your rooms to be more like an office space? So that means they are going to be there in the future.
Again, the, the assumption was when, when this was approved, that there would be more bed, more, more units out on this site, right? And so if, if, at the end of the day, right, when you assume there's 730 people that are going to be on the site using the, the facilities and, and now there isn't, there has not been. Right? You're looking at the delta between, well, what did we assume was going to happen back then and what, what can we assume is going to happen now? And is that delta a significant change? If that's the question, right? And so, so no, we do not believe that because more people would be working at home, when you compare that to what was already approved, there would be a significant change or significant increase in, in use.
So, hold on a second. So you're saying, I, I, I'm getting back to what you were saying about the population and the bedrooms and everything else. So you're basically, you're saying there was going to be more units previously, but what you're doing is, is just substituting less cost of units for an extra bedroom in the units that you are building. So it's kind of.
But that's the point, right? And that's, that's what the numbers show, is that if you're going from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, the assumption that it's going to be a significant more amount of people doesn't bear out, right? That's, ultimately, that's what the question comes down to. All right, now you've got this change from, from two bedrooms to three bedrooms. Does that mean that there's going to be a significant more demand on, on this recreational?
Okay, so, but getting back to also that, we've had comments about how the amenities and things aren't sufficient as it is now. You're going to include this new development and you're not really taking into consideration for the people and their amenities. And they paid good money for this.
I, I, I disagree with that, right? Because, because that, that, at that point, from a SECR perspective, I, I, again, the, the issue, the issue of existing residents and, and maintenance of the facilities, use of the facilities is separate from whether or not an additional pool needs to be built, right? The question is, okay, well, is there enough onsite recreational amenities to deal with or address the, the assumed usage? Right? That's the question. And so, so you don't know what the assumed usage is today for the, for the proposed development. You, you got to make assumptions and projections of how many people will be living there. That's, that's the analysis before the board.
It's theory to reality.
I, I think.
It's theory and, and then there's reality.
I agree with Bob. I, I do.
It's theory and reality. It's, it's studies of this and that, but if you ask the people that are using it, it's not what they're feeling. That's all I'm just saying. And I, you know, you, you can quote the numbers. I understand. I'm, I'm a numbers person, so I understand that.
Well, yeah, listen, I, I understand what you're saying. Again, maybe you have to talk to council about that, but as to how the analysis works, right? Empirical data needs to be the basis of, of any, any planning board decision. It's not just people coming up and saying it's not sufficient. There's got to be empirical data to support it.
Okay. Okay. First of all, I look at, like I said, I, I see an increase in, in residents. I, we'll, I'll, I'll share, we'll talk. The next part was transportation. And again, seems like, I feel like you're simplifying, simplifying everything for the narrative to say it's a lesser impact. And you're saying it's, you have 0.51 trips per residential unit. In trip generation, there are other variables that are considered, right? Residence and number of cars. Is that correct? To assume that when, when you're thinking of different variables, when you're doing trip generation, here you're just going by units.
That's.
But there are variables that are used.
The Institute of Traffic Engineers.
Yes.
Right? Which is, which is the standard that we all use, goes by units. So.
And there's, they, they do talk about having independent variables, correct?
Yeah, let me, let me, I'm not going to play traffic consultant. I'm going to ask your traffic consultant.
Philip Greeley, Colliers Engineering. So yes, there are other variables that come into play. However, the way that ITE publishes the data, it does not stratify, stratify it relative to car ownership or anything else, because the database that they have is large enough that it takes into account the fact of some of these variables. So the way that the trip rates are, and they, and this has been for years, going back to 2000, the different, there's been four additions of the Trip Generation Manual. And on residential uses, there hasn't been that much of a change at all. It's per dwelling unit is how it's calculated. So in the narrative that refers to the 0.51 trips per dwelling unit, that's the standard rate that's used in terms of trip generation.
That's used for condos?
For condos and townhouses or grouped together and even apartments now, they're grouping them all into one category in the current manual.
The current manual is what, 11?
11.
I thought in 11, isn't there a new land use code for townhomes 215?
There's a new land use? Yes, that's correct.
So that's not 230 like you're using?
Well, the, the, the reference to 230 is to when the original documents were done in 2006. They've grouped it all together into this multifamily category of condos, townhouses and apartments of a certain type.
Right.
So in terms of that 0.51, that's still the range that you would use for peak hours. And the reference in the narrative here, it's still consistent with what's being used today.
Okay.
So in, in, and to further, yeah, so in addition to just relying on that, we actually have done some counts, okay? Even though we're still in the pandemic protocol, we call it with DOT. We wanted to see how the trip generation was compared to what was estimated back in the 2006 study. So, and not surprisingly, the trip rates are actually lower. They're on a peak hour basis, the trip rates, for example, at Bennington today is in the order of 0.4 trips per dwelling unit. So, you know, that, that was just for us to see because we want to see actual localized data when we can. So we did surveys over several days and the peak was less than the 0.51 that was used in the original studies. Furthermore, as pointed out in the narrative, the commercial space that was accounted for originally. So there was a total of 212 trips that were estimated in the peak hour based on the original 337 dwelling units and 21,000 square feet of commercial space. The allocation of those trips, the 212, was 172 for the residential and 40 for the commercial. Now, the commercial is, is no longer there. So from a total trip generation, even though there's more, there's fewer units, but more bedrooms in the, in the units that are being planned here, the traffic generation total is still going to be less than what was originally accounted for. And, you know, just in, in quick numbers, the original was 212 trips. If you take the 175 at the 0.51 plus the additional 133, I believe, is what the, the new number is. And you add that in, and then even if you accounted for the additional 53 bedrooms and say it was at the same half a trip per, per bedroom, you're still going to be less than the 212 that was in the original SECR documents. Because we, you know, we don't have that commercial traffic generation.
So the thing that stuck in my mind regarding the, the traffic studies from 2006 was those were based on theoretical projections of what would be happening into the future based on the overall development. But now we actually have road systems there and as you're mentioning, you know, it probably would be helpful to find out what current traffic counts are on those roads at the, you know. Basically, it's, it wouldn't be that difficult to look at, you know, the full length of Merritt Boulevard because there are only really two main intersections on each end of Route 52 and, as well as, you know, the site entrance.
Right. So, so what we have done, just so, and it hasn't been submitted to the board yet because we just finished it. We've collected traffic volumes on Merritt Boulevard in the vicinity of this site, okay? And traffic movements coming to and from the, what's occupied on Bennington, I believe is, is the access road. So we do have several days of what those volumes are on Merritt Boulevard crossing that. Because what you really want to see is how are those volumes and the traffic coming in and out of, because this is all going to be served off of the access from Bennington, how that would change anything that was analyzed previously. Because it's the generation of this site that you're going to be looking at, at that intersection. By the time you get out to Route 9, it's, those trips are going to be de minimis. Or even by the time you get out to 52, the same thing.
So I certainly think it would be helpful for the board to see the numbers that you came up with. And that would certainly be part of our SECR determination.
Yes.
And if, as you say, it's leading to the conclusion that overall traffic flows and projected volumes based on, you know, the current trip generation multipliers or factors that are being used today lead to the conclusion that the amended site plan will result in less traffic than under the 2006 study, then that would certainly help the planning board
Yes.
make some determinations. So do you have any idea timeframe of when?
We would pull that together very quick. We, as I said, we just finished collecting the data, but I would say within a week we'll have that to you.
Okay, so, I mean, just based on that, that one subject area of transportation and traffic impact study, we should see that before we do make a SECR determination. And so if you can have that for the submission date for the June meeting.
Absolutely.
The other part of that that we've heard comments on, which, I mean, in my mind, I was thinking that we're going, if we're going to have some degree of a limited updated traffic impact study, which is sort of what we're talking about here, we heard a lot of resident comments about their perceived need for a second access onto the surrounding road system. And certainly putting something in that updated study that would address that.
Yes.
And either indicate why that's not possible, and I, I have some ideas myself why it may not be possible, but certainly because the topography of connections is fairly difficult. But to really document some of that.
Yeah, what we would include in our evaluation would be an analysis of the intersection, the, the single access to show that from a capacity standpoint, it could be accommodated. And then we will provide some additional information that you're referring to in terms of other factors of why or why not a second access could or couldn't be provided. But I think the important thing is to show if the single access couldn't handle the traffic, that's a different issue. But we will provide both that analysis and some discussion regarding a second access.
You know, as well as some of the issues that residents were raising about that access point. You know, I mean, in addition to the fact that people have to wait at peak hours, long amounts of time to get out, which is, you know, it's basically a, a factor of the existing road conditions. But it would be good to be able to document that and give the board some understanding
Absolutely.
of what the operations are there.
Mm-hmm. We will compile that and get it submitted. We will compile that and get it submitted.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying some of that. So Felix, do you have anything else?
Right now, I have to speak to our consultants.
Yeah, so you've got some numbers you're going to show to John B. and whether, you know, if there are other people at CPL who can help us figure out some of that.
Yeah, we can certainly look at them and give you some feedback as to how they compare or don't compare to the numbers that were used, so.
The only thing we'd ask is, please give us the numbers too, because if our submission deadline is a week, what is it, two weeks?
May 25th.
Yeah, so, well-
May 25th.
Yeah. So tomorrow morning, or I guess in 30 minutes. If you could give it to us, that'd be helpful.
Okay, sure. I have just one last thing. I know, I asked last time about testing the water, and I know that you've said that it's not something you have to do, but you've also talked about providing a space for water softeners, correct? Is that correct?
Yes. Each unit will have a, yes.
And where would that be? Where would that space be?
Can I just ask, following up on that, in addition to a space for water softeners, would there be, you know, places for hookups to it being installed so that they'd be ready to go, basically plumbing-wise, if people decided to put the water softener in there? Because I mean, space is one thing, which is good, but I think we got some comments from residents that they had to install their own water softeners and had to go through a huge amount of, you know, work to do that.
Yeah, we'll take a log to make sure we do.
Okay. Thanks, Felix. You can go ahead if you want.
No, the only thing I was going to ask again is, I really would still like to know if we could test that water, just to see, because I think if somebody's going to get a water softener, it may be dependent on how hard that water is. Does that make sense?
Can I just, let me just jump in.
I know.
The town has a contracted water operator that tests the water, you know, yearly, annually, monthly, depending on the type of test. There's tons of data available of the water quality. There's an annual water quality report that's put out, so that information is there for historical periods. I'm not sure if you're looking for additional testing beyond what's being done currently.
Yeah, I'd just like to know specifically what they're getting there. Because I think if, you know, I think Toll Brothers is trying to find a solution to the problems, but I think it'd just be good information to have, and if it's available out there, then we'll take it. But I just want to know what it is, so that's why if somebody-
Yeah, right, that's-
-rely on the town to-
Right, the answer I was going to give is, the testing that we would do is the testing that your consultant would do or that Camo would do, because we rely on the town to provide that water.
Okay.
I mean, I can certainly put together some kind of summary of what tests have been done in the past year, two years, five years, whatever you want, and you can see all the different water quality data from that.
Okay. I mean, I just, I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
It's a public system, that's why.
Okay.
It's a town issue, but.
The letter said that hydrant flow tests had been conducted, and those results were shared with the HOA. Is that my understanding? Because that was a comment that came up, but that's what it sounds like.
So we've begun the hydrant flow testing. We're still processing the results. We have additional hydrant flow testing that we're going to do and conduct. As far as sharing with the HOA, we're going to include the hydrant flow testing in our water engineering report to help substantiate the design. That's a matter of public record. We're not providing any specific information directly to the HOA, and Toll Brothers does this part of their discussion, but it'll be in our water engineering report, which is a matter of public record.
So formally engineer, usually it's the attorney that's the engineer, the formal guy. When it's in the report, we will provide it to them if they'd like it, yeah.
All right. Anything else that board members want to cover? Because I think we have some kind of a plan for getting in some additional information now, and hopefully revisiting this at the June meeting.
The only thing we'd ask, if, so we have on our list is the traffic report, the numbers on the amenity space, or, you know, the population, and the sewer, sorry, verify that we can do the hookups on the software. If there's anything else that's sort of holding up the neck deck, we'd like to know so that we can get this to you. I would, you know, note that your consultants have drafted one, so I'm assuming that the going intent is that the record is sufficient. But if there's anything else that's missing, we'd like to know now so that we can provide it to you.
I didn't have anything else, but anything else?
No.
All right, we discussed everything? Okay. The one other question I would have is, I like the idea that you're going to meet with the HOA to go over a number of these other things. Is that going to be like an open meeting to residents at the development?
Well, I think first they need to meet with the HOA to set the meeting, and then there'll be a second meeting with the residents, so.
Because I think it would be helpful if, once you set things up, that it be done in a way that would be, you know, open to the residents so that they can hear what's going on.
Right.
But of course, there are operational aspects of the way HOAs hold meetings.
Right.
I know, because I'm in one.
You're on the board. There's no other?
Okay, okay, okay. I was just trying to be, I was trying to be helpful. I don't need any more comments from the peanut gallery. Thank you. Okay. All right. So I think that's all that we have for tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do quickly on the Johnson Trail subdivision, we, there's a lot to go through, and we definitely need to do that at some point, but I have a question for, particularly for the board, but also for our consultants about setting a public hearing for the June meeting. And in my mind, I was kind of thinking, you know, before we even get to talk to the applicant about the project, that it might be helpful if people are comfortable with setting a public hearing for the June meeting, that we go ahead and do that. But I'm kind of looking to you all to see if you have any thoughts on that, based on what, you know, what you know from your review memo and having gone through the materials. And I'll let, I'll let Michael introduce himself and weigh in, but, you know, that's where I know we're going to have kind of limited time.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you wanted to respond to that, John?
Well, I would just say, wow.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, it's-
But I don't really want to be here past midnight, that's for sure.
No, 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 I don't think we need to go through my memo point by point. What I will say, just in summary, is we met with Mike about a month and a half ago now.
Plus her mind.
We went through a lot of the items, and they are definitely moving in the right direction now. I know our comment memo looks rather long, but the majority of the comments are related to the new SWIP that we recently received, and it's a full SWIP now, which is, which is good. And I would go further and say the majority of those SWIP comments are very minor in nature, just clarifications and stuff. So I think if you were to ask my opinion, if they're ready to go to public hearing, I would say yes.
And I know it would be in a, sort of an unusual way of doing it, it's a little bit backwards, but setting a public hearing, hearing from the public, and then having the project review, which could then discuss any comments we do hear from the public, and then kind of go back to, you know, a little bit more detail, in-depth review, based on your memo, anything else that may have come up by that time. I have a few comments, which I can kind of tick through in about 30 seconds, just to give you an idea. The one thing I was really glad to see in the revised plans was the tree preservation plan, which is in there, but it's not really clear what that plan means and how, you know, how operational it would work. And so I think we'll need a little bit more detail on that, but tonight isn't the night to do that, obviously. But I don't think that's something that should hold up having the public hearing either, so.
So, just as a quickie.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you had any thoughts on setting a public hearing.
Well, logistically, we may have an issue with that for the June meeting only, because Debbie is scheduled to be on vacation in lead up to that meeting, and so coordinating and making sure that various different aspects of the public hearing requirements are met. Another alternative might be to consider authorizing a public hearing for the July meeting, even though that would cause some additional delay, but nonetheless, at least-
I'm sorry. Debbie, you can't go on.
I'm sorry.
At least, at least that way, they wouldn't have to come back for the June meeting and wouldn't have to be added to the agenda.
That would afford them some time to address the comments in Mr. Bodendorf's memo and allow us to discuss something that may be a little farther along.
So, it's late. I was in my car in a park, I listened to the Yankee game, so.
I'm jealous.
I was trying to keep myself a little entertained while you guys were here, heard it work, so I get it. What I were looking for was, you know, the ability to go to a public hearing, which is not logical stuff with this. Yeah, there's some SWIP comments which we need to clean up. As long as we can at least move to that point, and if it's July, I don't think that hurts client concern either way, so that would be great. Let's get it, let's work on those comments, and let's get out of here.
All right, so what is the July meeting day?
14th.
That's Steel Day.
Ah, yes.
What is it?
July 14th.
A Steel Day, that's cool.
So when do we have to put up the signs?
It's not like Seacor to my-
Yeah, hold on.
You don't have to worry about that right now, but you do have to decide on the signs.
Yeah, we will do that.
How far in advance?
He gets a whole packet, Robbie, on that, so.
Yeah, I mean, normally, the timeframe would not necessarily be to put the signs up right away, but-
No.
I mean, the sooner the better.
10 days prior to the public hearing is what's required by the code.
Yeah, so more than that is certainly good, too. But, yeah. So, all right, having gone through that very brief discussion on setting a public hearing, would someone like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing on the proposed Johnson Trail subdivision for the July 14, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as possible?
You betcha.
Anthony, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody seconded.
I think I heard Bob, didn't I? And any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we have set a public hearing for July 14th. Now signs. I would suggest the placement of three signs. One at the frontage of the site on Mountain View Road, where the proposed Johnson Court will intersect. One at the frontage of the site on New York State Route 82, because there is a small amount of frontage there. And one at the frontage of the site on Penny Place, at the location of the proposed Hammerhead Turnaround. What do you think?
I agree. We've got a few locations where we can put this, so let's do it.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion for that? We might as well, just to make it official. Would someone move that?
Someone would.
Anthony seconded it. Felix seconded it. I won't even ask for further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have the locations and number of signs. And so that'll give you, Debbie, plenty of time to get ready for that. And meanwhile, the-
More than two minutes.
Michael, if you can put together, you know, any additional information that would help, we'll have a full project review of the July, well, actually, we can have that at the June meeting, if you're ready to do that. I think we will be. And we can put it much earlier on the agenda, too.
That would work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jonathan, you want to report on the issue?
No, I don't want to do anything else.
All right, thanks, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. I'll get you the packet.
So, assuming there's nothing else, I can make the motion to Richard.
Yes, would you please do that?
I will make that motion.